Welcome to the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners Budget Workshop on this day, May 9, 2017. We'll start with buzz it. Buzz it. How about budget? Budget presentations from Commissioner Tobias regarding fire rescue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I guess it's good and bad news, but the Florida Legislature agreed on a budget, and Sonny died yesterday. And I think the item that is going to have the largest impact on us will be the amendment to the Constitution that they decided to place on the ballot in 2018. It will take our, potentially our homestead exemption, from $50,000 to $75,000. And the Florida Association of Counties, one of the organizations I suggested that was advantageous to keep, was on top of that, and pointed out that this will have roughly a $17 million impact if it was done immediately on our budget. A little more specifically, on the general fund, it will be $6.775 million. So as we move forward and look at funding roads, I think we have to prepare for this as we move forward. We've heard from not only the property appraiser, but we've heard from the supervisor elections, both tell us that if it was placed on the ballot, that it will pass. And in 1980, when the $25,000 one, it passed with more than 80 percent. And then in 2008, the bump from 25,000 to 50,000, it passed with 65 percent, or 64 and change percent. So I think they are correct in their assessment, but I think that we need to take our jobs very seriously here. And, you know, the cuts that I've suggested, and I think other folks have suggested cumulatively add up, but are getting, will get nowhere near to what we would need to fill a hole of about $6.7 million. And the good news is, we have three years to prepare for this, but I think that preparation needs to start immediately, because we have a huge, as we found out, a huge backlog on roads. But, you know, when we get done with this, I think we need to, Jill's been very helpful with the budget, but I think we need to have some sort of directive how we prepare for this cut, because either we cut services, or we raise taxes, we increase the millage rate. And as Jill aptly pointed out, that, you know, if we raise the millage rate, that impacts the folks that don't have homestead. So while a large portion of people would see a cut, you know, the bulk of people that don't have homestead would see a huge increase on their taxes. Yes. So I think that, you know, raising the millage rate to cover that deficit is against the spirit of the amendment, but even worse yet, would have a huge impact, not only on businesses, but people that own second homes. But either way, I think it would be foolish of us to stick our head in the sand and say, I hope this doesn't come around, because it will come around, and it is a huge, will be a huge impact on our budget. So anyway, I want that in the back of our minds as we move forward. The larger reductions that we can make now and put into roads, the more money that we will have to fill that gap as we move forward with potentially the, I think that'll be the 2019-2020 budget, but those, that is rolling around sooner than what we can imagine. And that is a sizable, sizable, sizable impact on our budgets and...
Before you go any further, I want to weigh in on that amendment as well. Simply put, if given the opportunity, people like to vote themselves tax decreases, what they perceive to be a tax decrease. But the problem is that it still costs the same amount of money, and grows every year because of inflation, to cover the cost of doing business. So that money's got to come from somewhere. So I would suggest perhaps, maybe instead of a $25,000 increase, let's go all the way to like a $250,000 increase, and smack people right between the eyes, and make them realize that this isn't going to work, this doesn't help, it's sleight of hand, is really what it is. And the only thing I can think of is it's going to have to be an educational process. We're going to have to get out and talk to the public, just like I'm doing now. If we vote for this $25,000, additional $25,000 homestead, it's going to be devastating to every municipality, every county in this state. So we really need to think long and hard about how we're going to try and educate the public. So with that, I'll give the floor back to you, Mr. Tobias, unless anybody else wants to weigh in on this subject. Mr. Tobias, you have the floor.
Thank you. And I think you're right, even though I stand on the other side of that, I will be voting for the $25,000 additional exemption. It will save Florida's taxpayers $644 million. But I believe education is key, and preparation is key, and we'll let the voters decide what they think is...
But you can't rob Peter to pay Paul. That's the bottom line.
Okay. Onto my suggestion for budget reductions to fire rescue EMS. I passed out a little bit of an updated one, I believe that you should have handy. And some of these are small, but the first one is some shared memberships.
Excuse me, Mr. Tobias.
Sure.
Do you have this latest list?
I don't believe I have the updated one, no.
This is a reduction based on non-critical memberships, non-reoccurring memberships, that my staff got with the Assistant Chief of EMS, and it's a reduction of $384. Moving on to the second line, which is cell phones, that is $1,106. That comes from the fact that EMS in last year's budget had purchased 10 radios at $5,400 each for $54,000, and has some maintenance there at over $8,000. So we had a total cost of $62,000 and change, and wonder about the redundancy of cell phones after we have a strong infrastructure of radios. Moving on to travel. This is some leadership conferences out there, and, you know, it looks like one was in Salt Lake City, while I'm sure that additional networking and maybe ideas were to come out of this, I think that those funds can be used better places than traveling as far away as Salt Lake City. The next one is building. Building's an easy one, because that one is non-reoccurring, so I don't think we're going to find, you know, any concerns with the non-reoccurring. Then we get into fire rescue. Now, this one's a little bit difficult, and I have a 10% reduction in salary and benefits. And let me, I couldn't do the math any better than this, I would have to work a little bit with the chief on this, but Brevard County has lifeguards at certain beaches during the off-season. And while they do perform a service, I don't know that it is an essential service to have lifeguards at beaches, you know, in freezing weather in, you know, December and January. So if that reduction is greater than that 10% there, or slighter than that 10%, I would certainly take that into consideration. It was just about lifeguards at the beaches during off-peak seasons. This would have no impact on the beaches when we have our greatest number of tourists and residents enjoying the beaches. Books and publications, another small amount, 200 bucks, which gets us to cell phones, same sort of issue there. We have a whole list of folks that have cell phones, want to deal with the redundancy there with our radio infrastructure that is very expensive there. Operating supplies, I have down, we, this is a reduction from five paddle boards down to three. Use our paddle boards a little bit longer than the three or four years that life expectancy that we have. I understand they're essential, but let's see if we can make them last a little bit longer, that'll save us a little bit of money there. Some travel and per diem of fire rescue, that one was kind of an interesting one. I guess the Florida Beach and Patrol Chief Association has meetings that take place all across the state on a monthly basis, and while I'm sure that the paradigms of beach rescue change, I doubt that they change on a monthly basis. And also, there was a national conference in there to Brewster, Massachusetts, which does not have any essential accreditation for it, but nothing also against Brewster, Massachusetts, I'm sure it's a wonderful place. Number 10 there is machinery and equipment, and a large portion of that is a $45,000 pickup truck that hopefully is non-reoccurring. But on top of that, I've got a whole bunch of other equipment that the office has asked for, and we've reduced it by one on that, and I have it on there, less ATVs, one less on all those. I have a list of all of the equipment they have, so it's not all that large of a reduction. And finally, construction, that's the $41,834, and to my understanding, that is non-reoccurring as well. So the reason I pull out non-reoccurring, because I don't think, I think if we don't pull it out, we will find another place to spend that, and maybe there is another place to spend that, but I think that should be brought to our attention, and we determine if it's necessary to go forward with that. So, Mr. Chair, that is a total potential reduction of $286,000.
Thank you, Mr. Tobias. Chief Scholmeyer.
Yeah, how do you want to tackle this, line item by line item, or you just want to talk about...
Whatever you feel comfortable with. You have the floor.
All right. So moving to the 10% reduction in salaries and benefits, Commissioner Tobias, you mentioned the full-time lifeguard towers would be the cut, or is that a 10% across the board?
And, you know, and I appreciate all your work getting us this information, and we're dealing with a whole bunch of, whole bunch of different budgets, and it was being filtered by the county manager, the previous county manager, so we were getting this stuff much later than what you were returning it, and so I greatly appreciate that. But I didn't have time to get back, and it's my understanding that you manned four or five different beaches during off-peak seasons. And I would have got back with you and asked you, how would you handle if we came with the directive of, let's post signs and say during whatever off-peak, you know, November, December, January, whatever off-peak is, that we are not going to patrol these beaches? What would that reduction be to salary and benefits? And like I mentioned before, I arbitrarily chose 10%. If it's more than that, great. If it's less than that, we'll deal with that as well. I just don't know that in these austere times, when we have other issues, that patrolling, you know, certain beaches in freezing weather is the best use of our precious tax dollars.
Okay. So the five full-time towers that you're talking about were put into place in around 2008, after we had a series of drownings, tend to be exact, in 2007. It was a board decision to create a full-time and expanded lifeguard service, which we did, and that's where you get the five full-time towers, and then the 20 seasonal towers. Since then, I can say we haven't had a rip current drowning at a guarded beach during lifeguard hours since that inception, so it's a very successful program. Just a point to note that a lot of the seasonal towers are cost shared with cities, half and half, and then our full-time towers run about $171,000 a year to operate. Our seasonal towers are roughly $37,000 a year to operate. So you can cut, you know, if it's your desire, you can cut, you know, a few seasonal towers, you can cut a full-time tower, whatever to get to that point, but I'm just telling you that we created a full-time ocean rescue lifeguard program to prevent drownings, which we have successfully.
All right. Chief, during the months that are off-season, are those, any of those towers that you continue to operate during the off-season, are they manned by anyone other than current full-time employees?
The full-time towers, I assume, are only full-time employees. So the five towers are manned by full-time employees.
So, okay, so basically, if we were going to cut that, you would either have to change them from full-time employees to reduce that expense.
Correct. And, but something else to note, that in the season, those full-time employees are also the supervisors for the 100 seasonal employees as well.
I have the floor, Commissioner President. I don't have beaches in District 1, so I don't have a real strong education that y'all have to forgive me, other than I enjoy y'all quite often. So which districts are mostly affected if we were to cut back on lifeguards? I'm guessing that we're looking at District 2 and 5?
District 2 and 5 have the bulk of the towers.
Okay, so if you, if you commissioners wouldn't mind weighing in, your opinion would mean a lot to me on how you feel like this would affect your...
Well, I'd like to speak. 2007, we had 10 people drown. In fact, we became listed as one of the most dangerous beaches in the country. How many we have the past year?
None, none if I have a guarded tower.
So, I mean, that pretty well answers it to me. I'm not going to take a chance of more drownings, because we want to cut 10%. I mean, that's a core responsibility of government, is public safety, so I'm opposed to any cuts.
And just for a point of clarification, the towers aren't just placed just because they're based on population, and the popularity of the beaches, and head counts usually during the most popular times. So they're not just placed anywhere, it's usually where we have the most populous, most population.
Commissioner Zanardi, would you like to weigh in?
Yes. Do you know, I mean, where were those drownings, and what time of year those drownings occurred?
The, in 2007?
Yeah.
Does it? I don't have...
I would say four or more during the off-season, when there were lifeguards at beaches, and the rest of them were outside of lifeguard areas, but it was mixed.
Yeah, I'd like to see that data before making at least a good decision on my part, because I know this issue has come up on this commission before, and I've been asked that question by constituents as well, so I'd like to see some hard data on that, when those unfortunate incidents took place. Maybe, maybe the idea is a compromise, you know, obviously, people aren't going to be using the towers, and if they're swimming out in rigid, frigid weather, I mean, at what point? I mean, you could just as well argue that they should be manned 24 hours a day, I mean, in reality, because I know some of those drownings occur, and some of those accidents occur in the water when people shouldn't, where they shouldn't be swimming, or during dangerous weather, so I'd like to see some data on that if possible.
And keep in mind, you know, we get tourists from all over Canada, I mean, they will swim in cold weather, and I'm sure that when they visit the beach in the wintertime, they're going to probably take a trip out to the ocean and swim. Us Floridians probably don't want to swim in the cold water, but we do have a good number of tourists that visit the beach and do just that.
I can tell you that I've had friends and relatives visit me in what I consider frigid weather, and they're here, they're going to the beach, and it could be 60 degrees, and they think that's nice, and I tell them they're nuts, but that's me. But that's the reality. You get tourists down here, and, you know, even if it's cloudy, they want to say, they want to ride home and, hey, I went swimming today.
Just from personal experience, and my family loves the beach, every time I've gone down, there's nobody in the water. I mean, at any time in the wintertime, I think I remember once, a couple of kids out there, professional-type surfers that were out there playing around in the water, but most times people aren't in the water when it's...
Let's ask for your recommendation, let's get the data and see where and when there's... 2007.
Just for clarification, did you say it was 171, if you were to do away with the off-season, that would be a reduction of 171,000?
A year-round tower costs $171,200 to operate.
Could I also request, if we were to get, could you figure out the, instead of my arbitrary 10%, could you find out what that would be if we were to, the cost associated with doing away with the off-season guard towers?
Yeah.
For those five, please.
And it would be roughly three to four, just off the top of my head, to get to the dollar figure you were talking about.
Three to four?
Seasonal towers.
Okay, I meant all of them, sorry, sorry.
And I would also like to see the difference between, you know, off-season is matter of perception, is that two months, is that three months?
I see.
That would rank between October and March.
Well, that's a pretty large, obviously, I don't think we would, this board would probably look at excluding in between October and March, that's a pretty big gap.
It's a clear season still.
Yeah, it's too big of a gap, so I'd like to see a smaller gap as well, possible. Is that okay?
Sure.
What hours are they manned, Chief, when we have them?
I see.
Maybe, I don't know what y'all would want to do. I still kind of want to know where they're at, and what type of populations there, because I expect Cocoa Beach is still going to be packed, no matter what time of year.
Well, and I can tell you, the other day, we were doing a walk on the beach, and at 5:00 in the afternoon, our lifeguard tower shut down, and there was a sizable crowd still on the beach, and so people will stay until they get to dark. So, you know, we're there from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., but the people certainly stay there a lot longer.
Okay, this is a good topic to talk through, but my other concern would be if this would affect tourism at all.
Absolutely.
Would it?
I mean, this, when you have something like this back in 2008, that says, world's most dangerous beaches, and then you have Brevard County for its rip currents with 10 drownings, I think that hurts.
Do we have any data that shows that we had less tourists in 2009 than 2008, or is that just a...
I really don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay, so let's, yeah, let's...
It's one of those things, but it's only common sense, that if you have the most dangerous beach, I don't think people want to go there and go in the ocean.
We have tourist development, I'm sure that they can quickly let us know whether or not 2009 was a decrease in tourists to Brevard County.
I do know it's up this year, you can't get a beach on the ocean right now along the East Coast, like until November.
Well, certainly a concern for me, just as Commissioner Barfield says, it's common sense that if you're getting negative headlines like that, I know what happened when we had a few headlines that we had dead fish in the water. There was a sizable decrease in people coming to the county and staying in the hotels and the...
But we also are ranked like the drunkest cities, Melbourne and Palm Bay in the country, we've been ranked the most...
Number two. We lost Reno on that one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Reno, Nevada.
The most violent, the most violent as well, and we, oh yeah, because of, and I'm not going to say which other city they often pair us with, but you can probably figure that out, but because they're violent, crime rate's high, it also includes Melbourne, Palm Bay, and I believe West Melbourne in that, in those numbers, showed us as the most dangerous. And that's terrible, because it's just not happening.
Well, then I have to question those, I mean, you've got, you're talking about comparing yourself to Detroit, Philadelphia, Newark, I mean, that's...
Thank you, exactly.
That's kind of far-fetched.
One other thing, if it's all right, one other thing that I'd like you to provide for me, if that's all right, is I, if you were forced tomorrow to make reductions, I would like to see where you think, I mean, of course, you wouldn't reduce, obviously, you'd want to keep it manned, but if you had to look at all of the locations, where you would choose to be the least impactful, if you had to choose, because that would probably, I mean, do they keep incident logs, lifeguards? Yeah, that would probably be a good thing to have, too, because Cocoa Beach, obviously, would be much more busy than...
They actually have very detailed logs for all the beaches, all the different situations that they deal with, so I think we could have easy access of that.
Yeah, I mean, I necessarily don't need to see the logs, but you can obviously track that information.
And, you know, for me, it would be foolish to cut a tower that we're receiving funding from a city. So some of those towers are partially funded by the city and partially funded by us, so it'd be foolish to cut one of those. So what we're really looking at is, is the towers that actually we maintain and staff ourselves with our own funds, so we'll look at that.
So for example, Melbourne Beach would be far less used than Cocoa Beach.
And Melbourne Beach, they actually, they're actually partially funded by Melbourne Beach.
So, okay, so that's something to weigh as well. Chief, could you indulge me and just go down this list, top to bottom, and give me your thoughts?
So, just a point of clarification, Commissioner Tobias, the fire rescue EMS cuts, did you take just the general fund portion of those line items out?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, which would be less than a total 10% cut as well.
All right. The books, publications, and memberships, I mean, they are what they are. It's memberships to a couple of organizations that our EMS chief belongs to, you know, if it's the board's will to cut them, I think they have value, but if that's the board's will, then by all means, you know, there's $384. It's only a third of that money, correct?
A third of that money, I'm sorry.
The books, publications, the membership, that's a third of what that line item was, correct?
The line item was 380, I think it was the full $384, or I took out the ones that were non-essential for accreditation. So, yeah, yeah, I left the ones that were essential for accreditation, and took out the ones that were non-essential.
Okay. In terms of cell phones?
Yeah, let me address the cellphone issue. We are in the process right now, we began on a countywide basis back in early to mid-April. We are going through a comprehensive review in all 11 departments that have cellphone issued, you know, issued cell phones, as well as stipends, we're looking at from both perspectives. We have a team of three directors that are going in with each one of those departments, and reviewing line by line, every single person who has a phone, to see whether or not we should be maintaining that phone, modifying it in some way, or deleting it. And that comprehensive review will not only be for the phone type, and who's using it for what purpose, but also what is the current contract that they have. And the directors that are involved were tasked with looking at what, you know, the best contracts that's available are. That review, which has been ongoing, I think they've gotten through six of the 11 departments. That review is going to be, the interviews with the departments is to be concluded by May 21st, and then by the end of June, we will have all the actions that they've taken in order to address cellphone issues throughout all the departments, and what modifications have been made, and we'll do an executive report back for the board, because, you know, we understood, as we started looking at some of these, and the issue was raised, that, you know, we wanted to make sure we had a very thorough vetting of cell phones in the organization, so that is ongoing as well now.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, we had talked about that before. Something I did not ask you when you advised me of that review, are you going top to bottom in the county, are you including the sheriffs and the tax collector and the constitutionalists? This is just departments?
No, this is only within, within board departments.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so then I would suggest that we postpone looking at this issue until we get information back from you, which would be our first meeting in July.
And I'm not trying to go back, but just for point of clarification on the, when we look to reduce, and I'll just use a number of three months, let's say, if it was a three-month period, that would be the off-season, would we be looking, or from the perspective of one of the cost analysis that we would provide, would be moving the current employees, I believe they're about between 15 and 17 full-time employees that man those five towers, would we be looking at reducing them to part-time employees? Is that?
Whatever would be, whatever would be most efficient. And, you know, I don't know that we need, would need to reduce all five of those. Maybe if we reduce the five off-peak down to two off-peak, you know, thinking that those other three could be shifted over. Obviously, I doubt the beaches are, in the middle of January, are very packed.
It's not just closing them all down, just looking at, trying to get some kind of reduction from the five that are there during the off-season.
Correct.
That would meet the expectation, okay?
But, you know, a little bit more, I think it's a little bit unique, you know, EMS and fire rescue with their sizable radio budget, you know, to not lump them in with the other departments that may not have that, you know, backup. When you look at a budget that's got, again, more than $60,000 in other communication devices out there, and then you have a list of, whatever this is, 2468, 10, 12, 14, 15 folks that receive stipends of at least $40 and as much as $75 a month, the redundancy there may be, maybe keeping the cell phones is right and doing away with the radios. You know, I don't know what that answer is, but certainly, to have those two modes of communication seems a little excessive to me.
And we will also be looking at, depending on what the best contract that the county has for smartphones, which have the internet access, et cetera, we'll be looking at whether or not the current stipend rate ought to be modified, because if our contracts are better with the cell phones, it would make sense that that would be the maximum amount that we should give for a stipend. So, we are also going to be looking at that as we move forward.
Thank you. I just ask that no one has, you know, government employee has a better cellphone than the rest of us up here. It's a little trepidatious when you look at the number of iPhone 6s and 7s that government employees have, and yet I have not purchased one for myself or my daughter yet, so if we could look for, goodness gracious, the most economical phones instead of the coolest, that certainly would be pretty important.
And if it's for the same price, or if it's at the lowest price, then that would be-
I don't care if they have a flip phone, you know.
Yeah.
You sound like my brother when he's complaining, "I got more cheerios than he did."
Just for clarification about the radio, the radio item, radios aren't used for day-to-day communications in terms of employee-to-employee, they're used for emergencies. So, those radio channels are usually kept open strictly for emergencies. We're not calling employees at home, I mean, remember, the radios aren't assigned to you, so you leave them at your workstation. So, you can't call an employee at home, you can't do staffing, and so, you don't want the radio traffic being taken up by non-essential communications.
Traveling per diem?
The traveling per diem, it looks like the trip to Salt Lake City is out, is that what I'm, what I'm guessing?
Well, I want your input.
Yeah, never believe what I say.
On the numbers, I want your input.
No, you know, for our EMS chief, that is an important leadership conference. It is in Salt Lake City. It is a long-distance travel, and it is quite expensive, but for him, he gets a lot out of it and brings it back. You know, it's, obviously, the board's will if they want to, they want to get rid of it. The travel that I do want to keep for him that is essential is those state quarterly EMS meetings.
And who is him?
Our assistant chief of EMS.
Okay.
And at the state quarterly EMS meetings, there's a lot of legislative updates and whatnot, so that's key for him to maintain.
What portion of that $3,300 would cover the Salt Lake City? Do you have any idea what the Salt Lake City numbers are? Or what's budgeted?
The, what's budgeted is $4,500.
For that one trip?
Didn't we make a change recently that if we do any out-of-state traveling, that would come before the commission anyway, so that might get taken care of?
I thought that was just for, I thought that was just for the board.
Oh, I thought we just blunted it.
And I didn't think we voted on it.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't yet, we haven't yet gotten that back. And I certainly did not intend to micromanage, you know, the departments. I just thought as a transparency thing, it was my intent, you know, was just us.
Okay, so we're looking at for, well, you've listed $3,300, but we're looking at $4,500 just for one trip.
And it could be general fund versus, you know, it's very difficult when you go through these budgets, when you look at general fund versus, so some of that may not come from, I imagine that's why I have a difference between those two numbers. My budgets are all based on general fund numbers, so we can transfer that money to roads.
So, Chief Scholmeyer, just for hypothetical, if we were to ax the $3,318, how would you attack your budget, knowing you have $3,300 less coming in? Would you portion it? Would you make your Salt Lake City trip every other year? Do you have any thoughts right off the top of your head?
I mean, I'm sure it can be used elsewhere, but I believe the reason for these cuts are for roads, correct?
Yes.
So, I'm giving it up to you.
Okay, well, that's why, that's why I'm asking the question, and that's why we're asking the questions, because while we're looking for money for roads and we're looking under any rock that we can find at the same time, we know that our budget is tight already, and we don't want to cut essential services.
And we have, we have equipment needs. If we didn't use it for travel, we'd use it for something else. I mean, not, not wants, but true needs in terms of equipment, so we would use that.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions regarding that line item? Okay, let's move on to building.
The building will not be in next year's budget.
It's not reoccurring.
Okay. And what else on this list would you maintain that you can't, you can't afford to cut?
Under books, publications, memberships, and training under the ocean rescue, you had $200. And what that $200 is, is it's standard operating procedure manuals for all the new hires every year, it's the cost of printing those, and those are handed out every year to the oncoming employees, and they use, they use as reference books for training.
This is for the new recruits?
It's for the new, the new lifeguard recruits.
Okay.
That we hire every year seasonally. Cell phones, I think Mr. Batte explained the cell phones. The operating supplies, again, those, in terms of the lifeguards, include flags, bedboxes, it includes suntan lotion, the stuff that they need on the beach. A lot of that stuff gets torn up either due to use or the sun, so those operating supplies are recurring just about every year. The traveling per diem, the two, to the US LA conference, the United States Life Saving Association is a nonprofit, it's got about 2,000 members. Their goal is to reduce drowning deaths on the beaches and on the waterways, and they also develop best practices for ocean rescue lifeguards. Those best practices are what we put in our SOPs for our employees to use out there on the beach. So, what we get out of those, that particular conference is, is we get the updates on that training and the best practices as they're developed, so that is a very important one for us.
Commissioner Snarty.
And would that not be available if you didn't go to the conference?
I suppose you could.
I mean, I know it's valuable information, but if you could get it remotely or via the internet or anywhere else, it's just a big cost. Travel was always one of those things that irritated me when I was at the city, and that's why I like Commissioner Pritchett's idea, even if we didn't vote on it, is this out-of-town travel, because they have conferences for every department, every organization, every government. I'm sure you've been to some of them that have been great, and some of them that have been a complete waste of time, because I've been on both sides of that as well.
I haven't gone to that many, but every one I've gone on, three this year, and I went on two last year, and one the year before, and I haven't been on any that weren't extremely productive, so.
But that's probably why you chose to go to those ones, though. I mean, I'm sure you looked at the itinerary or the schedule and said, "This is going to be beneficial to me." But they have a lot of these conferences, and what they are is a lot of vendors, or there are a lot of people that are doing other things other than, but if this information's readily available to you and to your department, I can't see why the necessity on having to make people travel to go to a conference.
Chief is there, hands-on, real-life stories, real-life stuff that they teach there. I know I've been to them, conferences on safety engineering, and it's a lot of real-time discussions that explain things, and also the latest in equipment, which is critical in your life-saving stock.
And I, I see you've been, you've been to the conference before, correct? What we get out of those training seminars is different techniques, things that have evolved. Ocean Rescue is fairly new to a lot of the techniques that are happening out there. The last training class that I went to incorporated sand trap. People are digging holes four or five feet deep into the ground, and we are learning excavation techniques to remove patients from the ground and saving their lives in a quick and effective manner. The machinery and equipment, the $45,000, I assume that includes the cool pickup truck? Okay.
Yes. And then the rest is a reduction of one from all those requests that you had, so instead of three, you know, oh, sorry, two, sorry, UTVs look really cool. I looked them up online, and I kind of want one, but I think, you know, you can do with one instead of three new ones. It's also a reduction of, instead of two cool jet skis, just one. Also, you wouldn't need, obviously, the two trailers, so this would, you know, put that down to one. And again, thank you for your staff, you were great, but I mean, I'm looking at like the UTVs. It looks like you're sitting on one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 right now that are all less than two years old. The ATVs, it looks like you're sitting on a couple of those that are less than three or four years old. Looks like you have a number of wave runners here that are also less than a couple of years old. So, you know, it's not like, my suggestion wasn't to zero any out, it was just to reduce UTVs by two, jet skis by one, and a trailer by one.
So, you're suggesting selling ones that we already have?
No, no, sorry, I'm not, but it looks like he, his office made a request that in this upcoming budget, they would like three UTVs. So, instead of providing them with three UTVs, one UTV, and instead of two jet skis, one jet ski. And, you know, again, they were very helpful with pointing out all of the current equipment that they already have, and I'm not forgetting rid of any of that stuff, just one less jet ski and two less UTVs than what they currently have.
What's a UTV?
Utility touring vehicle.
Okay, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, some kind of TV I'm not familiar with.
It's like a side-by-side.
I got you. And jet skis, maybe I should resign my position and join the fire department.
Well, we do have jet skis, and the reason why we have so many of them is geography. We have a 72-mile-long county, what, about 40 miles of protected beach, and so they are stationed in strategic locations throughout the area. As with the UTVs, the jet skis, anything that sits on the beach for any length of time, the salt environment is pretty harsh, so, you know, you could have a nice fiberglass hull or a nice fiberglass body, but in fact, the undercarriage is rusting out, and we do have pictures of those UTVs that are like three years old that are completely rusted out. Regardless of how many times you spray them down, salt, sand tears up those, that equipment, and that's why we replace it on a regular basis.
What model jet skis are you using? Wave runners, Yamahas?
Yamahas.
And what model?
The, I want to say GTs or-
No. VX, VX-110s?
VX.
Commissioner, if I could maybe summarize where we are with this. If I understood it correctly, they're, they're between non-reoccurring building, the machinery, equipment, construction, that was about $135,000. And so, that would have been one-time reoccurring, and I think what is being requested is that unless we specify what the specifics of that 135 would be used in the future, that that should have been, that should be reduced. I think that's what the request was. And so, we will look at doing that, if that's the board's direction. The second item would be the $127,000, around that 10% cut. I think we have an understanding, and we will come back to the board on, you know, the lifeguard towers and the year-round ones and what we could do to reduce that. That leaves really about $25,000 of additional cuts throughout this area, and I don't know if the board wants to consider something on those particular cuts, all of them, a percentage of them, whatever the board's direction is, and then staff, of course, we'll move forward, you know, undertaking that directive, if that, if that makes sense to the board.
Can I make a comment?
Commissioner Pritchett, you have the floor.
Chief, these items that we have, in your opinion, do we need them?
They are, they are tools of the trade. You know, without them, I suppose you could do the job, but certainly not more efficiently and effectively. As with anything else, you know, why do we need fire trucks? Well, we need to carry water, we need to carry hose, we need to carry the people to the fire. Why do we need ATVs? We need to evacuate people off the beach, we need to carry equipment somewhere. Why do we need the $45,000 pickup truck with a winch on it? Well, that's to pull the lifeguard towers back and forth off the dune line when we have surges in water or high and low tides. So, to me, they are needed. They certainly make the job a lot easier, a lot safer, and a lot more effective.
So, here's my thought. If we have stuff we don't need, we do need to get rid of them. My concern is right now, I don't want to get to where I'm telling you what you need and don't need. I'm not, I don't do your job, and I'm certainly not an expert in this, so I really need you to give us our opinion, your opinion. And you're saying a couple of things that you don't have to necessarily go to, that's good, but here's my concern, and I really need to hear from you. Like the jet skis, I get it. Kids get out in the water, there's undertow, you need that to get them, or you know, it could be the life or death of a child. So, I don't want to get to right now that I'm telling you how to do your job, so you're going to have to tell us if you need it, and you have my attention on that. And if you're thinking you don't, then I'm expecting you to make that decision with us. My thought would be for you to come and say what you think you could run it on, what type of budget, and then let you decide what's priority to you and what you need to do, rather than us try to pick and choose what kind of equipment you need and what you need to get your job done, or how many lifeguards. I still really need to know about the off-season. I don't want children or people drowning again, hitting the paper. Not only that, I don't want a kid drowning on the beach if we could have saved a few lives for, you said 34,000 for seasonal. So, the more we get in this conversation, the more I'm starting to get a little uncomfortable with where we're going of doing your job, and I'm not qualified to do that, sir. So, if you've got some things here you think that shouldn't be in the budget anymore, please speak up and tell us, but if some of these things you think are important to save lives, you need to say that, too.
All right, so I'll sum it up briefly. If we're arguing over, you know, $300 in books and publications, a couple hundred dollars in manuals, that's fine. The tools and equipment to do our jobs, I absolutely need. We already run a fairly bare-bones operation with the revenue that we're given, and I think we do a pretty good job, and I would hate to see any more cuts to equipment or personnel, and that's the way I feel.
So, that leaves us with travel. And we're going to, we're still going to hear back on radios versus telephones, et cetera. That would be the first board meeting in July, correct?
I would caution about using radios like telephones.
Well, I, I know, but we're going to, we're going to hear that all. I would like to weigh in as being a former lifeguard in another century. You know, I was a lifeguard in a pool, and I can tell you, people do some really stupid things. People absolutely have no right to be in a pool, don't know how to swim, and they come running right out of the locker room with a bathing suit on and jump in the deep end, and it's elbows and kneecaps flying all around, and the lifeguards, we only ever had two, and we'd have as many as nine people in the water. It can get crazy. So, I'm going to err on the side of caution and say, whatever you need to save people's lives out there, and I know that jet skis are extremely valuable to get to somebody quickly, if they have a cramp, if they're struggling, or if they're being endangered by a shark or whatever. You can't swim that fast, you can't get a, when I grew up, the lifeguards on the beaches had rowboats, and it took them a long time to get to people. Where jet skis, you can get there pretty quick, so. I would, I like Commissioner Pritchett's idea. I would like to task you with coming back with some savings here, and whether it be $10,000 or $20,000, whatever you- 10,000 or 20,000, whatever you can justify, that would be my personal request. And then after that, I would suggest that Mr. Tobia and the rest of us, we can look at those versus the rest of these, and we can come up with a number that I think we can all live with.
Chief, if we provided you with 15 wave runners and 25 UTVs, would the beaches be safer? Brand-new ones, like 200 horsepower or however you rate these things? I have no idea.
I see where you're going.
The VX-110s or the DX, they're like 110 horsepower, so they're not...
I've got no idea with that.
They're stripped-down rental models. If you go rent a jet ski somewhere, that's the model, they're workhorses, you can put thousands of hours on those things.
Well, you can't because, he says they corrode very quickly.
Not jet skis. The only thing that corrodes on jet skis, if they're not maintained, is the post-clamps on the inside, and they can be replaced. But he's talking about the UTVs.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, but just back to my question, you know, and instead of a $45,000 truck, we got you a $75,000 truck. You know, are the beaches going to... There's got to be a point at which we say that, yes, this is going to provide an adequate level of safety and yet do a service to our taxpayers.
And I think we're here right now. This is it.
This is the bare bones of three?
If you're asking my opinion, yes, it's the bare bones, and I would rather not do with anything less.
Okay. And can I ask you one other? And I would like to see the need for the pickup truck that was $45,000, the towing capacity. With that, you said you had to pull a lifeguard tower. I'd like to weight of that to see if, in the past, you have made the decision to save taxpayers' money, because I know that having owned a pickup truck in the past for far less money that could do quite a bit of towing, so I would like to, you know, see that you have made those decisions in the past.
All right. And so the 40... First off, Ocean Rescue maintains three frontline vehicles for their supervisors and one in reserve. They're replaced on a five-year cycle, or when they're five years old, they get replaced, and they move into a reserve status. The $45,000 pickup truck was actually a $41,000 pickup truck, and if I want to back up, it was actually a $27,000 pickup truck that had certain upgrades, such as upgrades to the alternator, it had a spray-on undercoating, an emergency light package, and stuff to make it an emergency vehicle. And that took it up to $41,000. It is four-wheel drive, so it can drive on the beach. It does move the lifeguard towers, and how much do those towers weigh?
3,500 pounds.
3,500 pounds. Those are the enclosed towers, not the...
Even those two.
It also tows a couple of times a year when they get replaced. They also tow large flatbed trucks with those red towers on them to go get refurbished or fixed or repaired, and new ones get towed back in. So they're towing heavy stuff, they're towing the jet skis on and off the beach, moving towers, so, you know, we believe it's a right fit.
Yeah. I, Barfield, you have the floor.
I grew up on the beach. I know, I know what goes on, I know how things change, and you guys, this is your profession. This is what you do. This is what you understand. You understand, you've been doing this many years, you know what happens if you don't have a big enough truck. You know why, things over the years, why you have to have this or have to have that. You know, it's the same thing with anybody, it's professional, especially in public safety. You know what? That's, we hire you guys to do the very best job you can, and you do. I'm not, I'm not comfortable, like Commissioner Pritchett says, I'm not comfortable making any of these cuts where it's directly related to you doing your job. You know, so I think it's kind of crazy to keep going over this stuff because, you know, you've got to have the equipment to do it. So that's my two cents.
I guess my only input on this is, you know, and we can, I mean, I don't have a problem, I guess, when we're talking about what's coming down the pike here in the future with the reduction in property tax revenue. My issue is, is that you can always do more, and you can always do better to make things safer, and I think I brought that up with the CBO funding or with the emergency service funding. I mean, if you have more, you're going to spend it because there is a need. My issue is, is that we're going to be negotiating a contract, and there are big asks in that contract. So where is the balance between public safety and taking care of your employees so we're not training them to go to other municipalities and having more than 10 UTVs on the beach? That's my issue, because there are, if you've looked at that contract, they're asking for quite a bit. And I want to be able to help them somewhat, probably not, obviously, their asks are excessive. However, I want to keep them here so we're not training them, because there's a cost to that, too. I mean, several hundred thousand dollar costs annually to that if we're training these guys for other municipalities. So there's got to be a balance. There's got to be, what can we live without versus what do we need to pay these guys so they stay? So that's my issue with, you know, making any reductions. We have to... And as far as the off-season goes, we could argue, and we can look at statistics and stuff. It would also be safer if you put double the lifeguards on the beach, too, because you may be able to help that mom jump in the water to save her kid, or there may be, you know, a heavier spring break one year or one season. So I would still like to look at those numbers, but if this board doesn't have the desire to look at those numbers off-season, then I don't want to waste your time or staff's. So, I mean, I'm not sure, obviously, Mr. Barfield's spoken, Ms. Pritchett, I'm not sure about. Mr. Smith, what do you say? Do you want him to bother to look at the lifeguards off-season, what that cost is or not? Because like I said, I don't want to waste anybody's time if it's not something, the desire of the board to look at.
No, I don't want to, I don't want to micromanage what public safety does. I would suggest if we want to do any cuts here, I think we could go into the travel and per diem and just come up with a number there. And, you know, the books and publications, you're looking at, well, you could get $3,000, $4,000 out of that, and you would still have discretion on sending people to some seminars or whatever. And YouTube's a great thing. I know that if you're doing an onsite excavation in a beach, that's a whole lot better than watching it on YouTube, but at the same time, if it can save the county money and you guys are studying technique on YouTube on how to excavate somebody and not chop up their arms and limbs when you're digging around them, I think that would be acceptable. And with those cuts, I don't think we're handcuffing you from doing your job for public safety, but that's my opinion. So I'll turn it over to the board. What do the rest of you guys think?
I think we've pretty, probably, pretty much already said, as far as the lifeguards go, I think that's been discussed. I mean, we can beat it down again, but again, again, there's those big asks coming from staff that we have existing versus, you know, being able to lose them to other municipalities.
And we're not going to fund, we're not going to fund the additional monies that we're going to need for staff out of any of these numbers.
But we're not going to buy half a jet ski cutting publications and some travel. That's going to, you know, so I'm just saying, it's, to me, it's almost pointless, but, I mean, I'm for any cuts, but I still would have liked to have seen that.
I'm for any cuts if we have waste or things that aren't producing. I think watching the budget over the last few years, there's been extreme cuts, so I don't know that there's a whole lot to take out of excess in the budget. There's, I agree, there's always government waste. You know, you walk out of your office, sometimes you don't turn the lights out. I think we're down to that part of it. So again, I'm going to take recommendation of department heads, and I'm really expecting you all to do your jobs, and you should be trying to run a tight budget. We should be giving you numbers, and you should be finding a way to make it work and do your job and do it appropriately. So I'm trusting you're doing that. With the lifeguards, you know, you'd have to come back, you know, if you've never thought about it before, you know, and this makes you think about it, come back with numbers. But again, sir, your recommendation's going to mean, going to weigh very heavily to me on where we go with these things. So that's where I am. But if there is waste, definitely get rid of it.
And I think we hit it on before. Up on the top, the Fire Rescue EMS, that building is not going to be recurring, nor is the construction on the bottom under Ocean Rescue at $41,000, so that won't be recurring next year. Nor will the pickup truck.
The cool pickup truck. I just ask, you know, and listen, I don't want to insinuate that you or any other department head is not using the resources as effectively as you think. Generally, the folks that I have met for the county are doing a great job serving their people, and I greatly appreciate the effort that you guys have put forward. I and my staff have done a great deal of work going over these budgets. I think that's my responsibility as a county commissioner, and I'm pulling back on some of these, as you've seen in the past, and I've also pushing forward on other ones. But as Commissioner Nardi pointed out, it doesn't seem like that is the consensus of the board, and I certainly don't want to put department, you know, through the wringer asking all these questions to keep on being met with consistently. I'm not interested in any reductions. Our budget is as slim as possible, which is fine if you believe that. But what I would ask for my fellow commissioners is, if that's the case, bring forward suggestions for increasing revenue. Please bring forward, because I would much rather sit here and discuss something that has a possibility of passing than talk about, you know, and I, again, I don't want to, you guys are sure not paid, you know, adequately, and a trip to Salt Lake City where you pick up some probably valuable knowledge is probably one of the few things that you do look forward to on an annual basis, and to take it away, you know, that is really going to have cumulatively no impact on our roads is, you know, not the intent of my exercise going through these things. The big ones here, certainly, there's not the discretion of the board to do anything about it, which is fine. But again, what I'm asking my fellow, you know, commissioners, because I was under the impression that we were going to cut the budget in order to fund roads, and that clearly is not going to happen. We are not getting anywhere. It's, you know, a majority of the commission here believes overwhelmingly that that's not where we should be. I mean, the lack of suggestions for cuts, I'm out here on a limb making them, which is fine. But I would ask, you know, I'm not the chairman of this, and I hope never to be the chairman of this, but I'm going to put a directive out there. If you're not going to come forward with any ideas for cuts, come forward with tax increases. Let's talk about raising the gas tax. Let's talk about raising the sales tax. Let's talk about something that is going to be a measurable impact so we can get the chief his three UTVs and his, you know, ATVs and his jet skis, and we can also pave the roads. But sitting here, spending a great deal of, you know, these wonderful folks out here that came to listen, the chief that has spent hours and hours and hours answering the questions that has come out of my office, seems like a real fruitless approach. So I would ask, you know, the chairman, you know, this seems like a lot of taxpayer time to deal with, you know, a cut of maybe $3,000 or $4,000 that if I knew was going to be the outcome of this, in all honesty, I probably, no, I definitely wouldn't have suggested that, because I certainly don't want to single out any one individual from getting training that has zero impact on paving any roads.
Well, I appreciate your thoughts, and I appreciate the work you've done here. I came up with the cuts last year. I think you have to, I think it's a necessary step to look at cuts, no matter how drastic, and it's up to the board to decide whether they're appropriate or they're not appropriate. And if they're not appropriate, then it's the will of the board to say it's not appropriate. And then if at that point in time, we realize that we've done all the cuts that we can do, and we've looked at everything that we can do to increase revenue by reducing costs, and we still haven't reached the goal of increasing funds for roads, then I think the natural progression is to look at tax revenue. But I don't think you start looking at tax revenue before you look at cuts. And that brings me to, you've obviously, Mr. Tobia, taken a microscope and a magnifying glass to fire rescue and ocean rescue, but you failed to do anything with sheriff, supervisor of election, property appraiser, clerk of court, tax collector, or libraries. And so my question is, why did you dive in so deeply with these guys and not touch them at all?
Well, first of all, we'll start with libraries, right? As you probably know, and I'm guessing maybe not, it does not come out of general fund. So your direction, I believe, was to find dollars that could go into, so if I cut $1 from the library, I can't transfer it in. So we'll start with libraries. That's why I didn't deal with libraries. Second of all, the largest portion, as you know, is our sheriff's budget, which I am still waiting back from our wonderful sheriff about the breakdown of the general fund budget. I have the outline, but I don't have the particulars on the budget. So when I get that back from his office, the accounting is a little bit different, and for all I know, bless you, for all I know, that's in the former county manager's office, that that just hasn't been forwarded this way, because there is a lag that takes place or took place when it came to that. The same with the supervisor of elections as well. Her office was asked the exact same question, and we didn't get the response back in time to put forward suggestions. Just because we're not at this forum right here doesn't mean that suggestions can't go to those constitutional officers, because we certainly need to do that. If we're going to get to the $6 million, or $6.7 million in the 2019, 2020 budget, we're going to have to ask those individuals to reduce their budgets by quite a bit, and that's even to maintain our roads at our current level, not increase, you know, that out there. But absolutely, I think that no one's budgets are off the table, and, you know, I'm sorry, but the reason I've gotten, been taking a microscope and a scalpel to budgets like this is because the chief has done such a darn good job with his accounting and getting the information back to us in such quick order. And I know that's horrible to say that you're a victim of your own success.
You're easy prey.
And we love doing it.
But you were, you were absolutely wonderful when it came to that, as were many of the other department heads, by the way. Overwhelmingly, when I was a little disappointed with the speed that they'd come back to my office, I would get responses from the department heads that we returned that a week ago, and I said I didn't have it, and of course, it was being filtered by our former county manager. So I quickly learned that we have some wonderful, wonderful department heads, and some of the constitutional officers are a little bit slower in returning their budgets, but certainly I think they need to come into scrutiny the same way that we do that here, and if that requires those constitutional officers to come back here or come to one of our meetings, I think that that's an important, important exercise, this budget. I don't think anything should be left off the table when it comes to this.
Well, I simply asked you, and I know most of what you were going to say, but I wanted to ask you for the public record, because I have an awful lot of people. I did a homeowner's HOA meeting last night, and questions like those come up, so I just wanted the general public to hear that. So, thank you.
Can I make a comment, sir?
Absolutely.
I think there's a little bit of different theologies in how we're approaching it, and it's good. I appreciate everybody having different opinions and how they approach it. Mine is, the way that I see budgets and the way I work them is, I think, number one, in my head, we need to determine what we decide's core function. That's what we get to do. Three people at least, we decide what's priority we move forward. And then what I think next is you find out how much money you have, you distribute it to the departments, it's their job to come back with a budget. I never really had any intentions of going through and telling them how to spend it. I've just never worked it that way. But I appreciate other people doing that. If it's what you want to do, I totally respect it, and it's fine with me. I'm thinking, Mr. Tobia and I, and I have, I've been totally upfront with how I'm approaching it, is, one, I had three objectives in this budget coming in my first time with the budget. One, I wanted to find a way to quit creating that bad inventory that is so expensive for reconstruction. My goal was in this budget, because we've had such a problem in the past, is just to get it to where we can repave the roads and we don't create anymore of that. I thought that was an enormous accomplishment this year, moving in with this commission. There's still that problem in the back, and I agree, Mr. Tobia, we've got to do something about that. My second one was to find a way to increase some income to the employees, and I think we're working through that with some ideas with the insurance reserves. And then my third objective, my personal one as a commissioner, was not to cut. not to cut any services at this point, because I don't think it's, it's going to be necessary. I think there's going to be enough revenues coming in with millage, my guess, unless, of course, still, we don't know what the constitutional officers are going to come in with the budget, because we haven't seen budgets yet. But, Mr. Tobias, I totally agree with you on your, your idea with, of ways to, to increase some funding. And I was kind of waiting until we got through this exercise, and, and actually, I was waiting to see what the millage would come back with, to see what we needed to do. And then we should have a discussion on whether we want to, to attack that really bad part of the roads that, that we need to. And that's going to take a new source of revenue funds, whether we follow the, the blue ribbon, ideas that, that came into this commission a few years ago or not. But, but that, and I've made no, no secret about how I'm handling it. So that's, that's really what I'm doing, and I'm listening to you guys as you work through things. But the three things I've been looking to do, we were kind of hitting, so I'm happy about that. And then I'm hoping that we can have a discussion of how to top it off with being able to fix the backlog. So that's, you know, no secrets with that. That's what I've been doing.
And doing away with that, too.
What?
And doing away with that.
That?
You wanted to do away with that as well?
I would love to. And that's what I kind of like, that we're doing with, with, with that one idea with reconstructing the loan. So, but that's, that's, that's basically my theology. So.
Philosophy.
Philosophy. Does it work at all?
Philosophy?
Theology?
Theology, that's a whole different subject.
My husband cringes when I use words over two syllables, so.
Commissioners, Marty, you have any thoughts?
No, I mean, I enjoy this exercise. I think where we, where we sort of got a little bit, and it's not you, obviously, you're the one standing up, you're having to listen to us yak, but where I think we got a little in the weeds is we've all had briefings, and, you know, again, without repeating myself for the hundredth time, many of us have been in office before, so we know probably at the very least 70% to 80% of what departments do, what directors do, what even certain positions do. Where I think we got a little, where it got a little cumbersome was the presentations. I think they got a little long, and I know everybody's proud of their departments, and everybody wants to show off what they do, and they want to tell us what they need. And it's, and it's obviously no fault of any director, because they want to tell us what they're doing. But many of us went through these very long and extensive briefings. So when you put that in with us going through the budget line by line on, on certain items, it seems like a very, very long process. And that, without even realizing it, can weigh on you, too. So, I mean, maybe next year, we, we make this a little faster and a little, because it's-
And actually, we've, we're trying to make it faster. As we speak, every director, no director-
Right.
-will be up there for one or 10 minutes.
And I'm not, like I said, honestly, people are excited to talk about what they do.
And they've worked real hard to consolidate their presentations into less than 10, so that we could, you know-
Right.
-be respectful of the board's time.
Okay. So, in the interest of moving things along, what is the pleasure of the board at this point in time? Do we want to torture Mr. Scholmeyer anymore? Do we want to let him sit down? Do we want him to come back at the end, the beginning of July and give us more information? What, what's the pleasure of the board? What do we want to do?
I, I made the suggestion about the off-season, but it appears, though, that three members were not interested in that. And I think Commissioners and Marty made a very good point. If there's not a consensus from three that, that, you know, the chief's got plenty of other important duties to, to, to do, other than provide us with data that is going to be met with a two to three vote. So, you know, I, I, I wouldn't ask him to do a, to a job that does not have an outcome that is going to be, going to be positive. As, as you mentioned, you're not in favor of doing away with any of the lifeguards during the off-season, even though I think that was one of the suggestions you made last, last year.
Yeah, and I'm not opposed to, to doing that now. I think, I think that could be a legitimate reduction. I think that they can look at their beaches and, and do a, do an analysis that they could do without two or three lifeguard stands. But in the big scheme of things, is that going to really make a difference? And I don't know. So that's why this is a five-member board. Everybody's got-
So, but if you're okay with him looking at the numbers, then the consensus, at least with the majority, is there for him to look at the numbers?
For the off-
To, to look at, possibly, yeah, just, but I would say, again, shrink that off-season. I don't think, you know, an off-season shouldn't be half the year, if it's, you know, October to May, but.
Well, what is the off-season? Because I know not many tourists are here in November. But the tourists crank up in December and January.
Season, off-season also works around spring break for the kids, too. So that's, and if you want to explain the, the actual season itself.
Actually, I'd like to say, our program's actually fairly efficient. Well, in March, we should switch to a weekend system, and we cover the week of spring break for all the Bafard County schools. And that extends all the way until May, Memorial Day specifically. That's when we'll be going live with all 25 of our lifeguard towers, seven days a week, until August, the first week of August, when the kids go back to school. Then we switch back to weekends only, and that extends all the way until October. During that time, after October, to March again, it's just our year-round staff of 15 employees, obviously there's two supervisors, where they sit the towers, the five lifeguard towers. And then, like Chief said, during the on-season, they become their supervisors for the seasonals. So it's, it's very efficient, it's a very, it's a dual hybrid system, it's very unique.
If you're looking at this, I mean, Cocoa Beach, you share with Cocoa Beach, don't you, Dick Parker? The Cocoa Beach area and whole central part, that's pretty busy. I, I would recommend you don't do any cuts there. I mean, it's, if you're going to do any off-season, because there are people there, especially the Hilton and all around, different parks. Maybe you won't do this in South County.
Well, again, like he said, Melbourne Beach shares, too. Okay, so I want to take, I want to take part-time seasonal off the board. I'm not going to support that. It sounds like you're very, very efficient with that. It's something that I thought of last year, but I didn't get that feedback last year. So, okay, so I'm going to walk that back. So the only other thing on here that I would consider would be the travel and per diem. And, you know, that's a token, token amount. But if you guys want to do something with those two, I'd be supportive of that. So, pleasure of the board.
Leave it. Actually, if that's something you don't have to have.
And I'll throw this out to you, too. We will take a look at, at our replacement programs, see if we can't tweak those replacement programs and, and push off some of that capital replacement to a later date, and see if that, see if that makes a difference. We will certainly look at travel. And I just want to say, I joke, but I, I do welcome the scrutiny. I, I welcome, you know, the, the questions, because it, it does, once they keep us honest, but we try to maintain a, a certain level of transparency, and it, it's welcome. So, thank you.
But don't do anything that, that hinders the quality of service.
Okay.
And so then the other thing is cell phones, correct?
Excuse me?
Cell phones, that's the only other-
We'll, we'll be coming back, we'll come back to the board with-
And you anticipate doing that, first meeting in July?
Oh, yeah, it'll be done before that.
Okay. And we'll give you, we'll give you a decision, so that you can plug that into the budget, the budget work. Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. And thank you to Mr. Tobias for your painstaking efforts to look at these numbers. Okay, moving right along, judicial support.
And we're going to try to move through as many of these as quickly as we reasonably can for the board.
Yes, good afternoon, commissioners. We do have a full schedule this afternoon. So this will be the quickest budget presentation that you've heard so far. I'm going to go through these slides very quickly. So judicial support budget is established to account for the funding of court-related functions as mandated by Article 5 of the Florida statutes. So included in that is court technology, which of course are the systems, networking, computers, equipment for the judicial branch, the state attorney's office, and the public defender's office. Court facilities, those are the cost to maintain and operate your county courthouses. Those are electricity, water, security, maintenance. Under local court initiatives, this includes specialized court programs, such as court innovations and the mental health court system. And then juvenile alternatives is your juvenile assessment center, as well as a juvenile alternative sanctions coordinator. This slide just provides a little additional detail on what all of those services really encompass. Also included in your agenda package is a copy of the section of the Florida statute related to the county funding of court-related functions, and that's Section 29.008. So you have that for your reference. This chart shows the categories of revenues and expenditures for each of the programs under judicial support. You'll see that there are charges for services for each of these programs, and I'll discuss that in the next several slides, as well as general fund transfers. The largest portion of the budget is for state court facilities, and again, those are your building costs, your maintenance, and operations. So the charges for services related to judicial support are classified as special revenue funds, and that's because they are legally restricted for a specific purpose. So starting off with court information technology, the clerk of court receives a $4 per page recording fee, and $2 of this service charge is allocated specifically for court information technology. Under court facilities, the board has imposed a surcharge of $30 for non-criminal traffic infractions, and so that, that goes to fund your court facilities. Oh, went too far, went too far. In addition to those two fees, there's also a $65 additional court cost that's been established by ordinance, and it's imposed when a person is found guilty of or adjudicated delinquent for any felony, misdemeanor, delinquent act, or criminal traffic offense. And that $65 additional court cost is appropriated into four equal parts per Florida statute. 25% of that goes to fund those local court mandates and initiatives. Another 25% goes to fund the juvenile alternative programs, and then 25% funds legal aid, and the final 25% goes to fund the law library, who you'll hear from later this afternoon. And so this pie chart breaks down the judicial support revenue sources. The largest portion is the general fund at 46%. That's at $2.2 million. Following that is that $2 recording fee, which again, funds court technology. The $30 surcharge is for the, the facilities, and then that $65 court cost fee. The negative, the interfund transfer you see going out, that is to fund the juvenile assessment center, and so those dollars are transferred to Housing and Human Services, who manages that program. This chart illustrates the revenue trend for those judicial support fees, and as you can see, the $30 surcharge that funds the court facilities has declined substantially over the past six years. The $2 recording fee has increased some, while the $65 fee has, it declined and then kind of stabilized over the past four years. Since the county is required to fund these court-related functions, if the revenue collected from these fees is not adequate, then of course, the general fund must fund the, these programs.
Jill?
Yes.
Why, is, help me here. Is there reasoning behind the decline in these funds, the facility surcharges, and the-
Yes, sir. Those fees are received on traffic tickets, non-criminal offenses, so that would have to be due to a decline in the number of traffic tickets.
Okay, well, that's what I suspected. So we're, we're suffering because people are doing a better job out there of public safety. Okay.
And so I'd like to point out a section in that Florida statute that was pointed out, that was included in your agenda package, and I won't read it to you, but it's Section 4A. And what it, what it does is it sets forth that the county expenditures of court-related functions will be reviewed annually by the Florida Department of Financial Services to determine if expenditures have increased by 1.5% over the prior year. And if their department finds that they haven't, and which in our case, they have not been, they notify the legislature, and then the legislature can determine if we're still meeting those obligations. And so each year, we provide information for this report, and we explain, you know, if, which it hasn't increased again, we explain the reasons why. If the department of revenue, if the legislature feels that we're not meeting those obligations, they can withhold some of those state shared revenues that we receive in the general fund. But the court agencies that we work with have really been an excellent partner in working with the county. They've understood the fiscal situation, and so they've helped us in reducing costs and gaining efficiencies. So we've still been able to meet those obligations with these declining revenues. However, there are some ongoing needs that at some point will have to be addressed, and that's what the next several slides show, the, the building needs at each of the courthouses. Central Services has a building assessments program where they identify and prioritize the deferred maintenance at all of the countywide buildings, including the courthouses. And so they look at the various mechanical components of each building, and so we just wanted to, to show those to the board, because of course, you know, just like road maintenance, you, funding your building maintenance is important, because if those building systems fail, it will cost you more in the future. And so this is the, the first slide is the Harry T. and Harry V. Moore Justice Center, which is located here in Vieira. And I'm not going to go through the list, but you can see it's just over five point, close to $5.6 million in unfunded facilities needs. The Melbourne Courthouse is just under $1.5 million, which is primarily site improvements in, in the roof. And the Vassarby Carlton Historic Titusville Courthouse, of course, that building was built, I believe it was 1913, so that presents its own set, set of challenges when it comes to remodeling and replacing antiquated building components. So the unfunded needs at that building are just under $1.2 million. And finally, court technology. The court agencies have identified several court technology needs that are currently unfunded at a total of $35,000. So that concludes the judicial support presentation, unless there are any questions from the board, or if, if any of our court agencies wanted to add anything to that.
I have a question.
Okay.
Condominium, state condominium law requires that condominiums have a set aside, I don't remember the term off the top of my head, that monies be put in a fund to cover costs like repairing roofs and replacing air handlers, et cetera. Is anything like that required of government? In other words, we know that every 15 years, we're going to have to replace an air handler, or 20 years. Is there a set aside that, that we do, or, or do we just attack these as they-
There aren't any mandated, no.
You know, I can, Facilities has their building assessments program where they've identified a five-year plan, which components are the most critical, and I believe Ms. Camerota could certainly address that better than I could. But the unfunded needs are growing, in other words, we don't, they don't have the adequate funding to address all of those needs each year as they come up. So they do the best to prioritize with the dollars that they have.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Abate, I'd like to see at some point, all of our facilities, you know, I know they've been assessed and conditioned, we should know what the lifecycle left on is, or whatever, where they've become critical. It'd be nice to know all that, too, because that falls right in to everything else we're doing with roads and, you know, everything else that's part of the infrastructure that we have to deal with. So I think we need to know that at some point.
And Facilities has developed a, that type of assessment, so we can surely get that for the board.
Yeah, because you get to a point where you can be penny wise and dollar foolish. And, and I'm sure that staff, I've been here two and a half years, and staff is very much aware of how scrutinized the budget is, and, and how tight the budget is, and try and make do with the best- with the best they can. So consequently, funds aren't being set aside for future use, because we don't have excess funds. And so that's where you get to the point where you start paying Peter to pay Paul, because you don't have $1.5 million for a roof, but you might have half a million dollars for some air conditioning units. So the roof gets left undone, and you fix half the air conditioning units, and the other half are left to go.
And there's a variety of areas in Facilities where there's been a deferral of either capital and/or maintenance expenditures, so that we could continue doing other key priorities that existed over time. And available funding, obviously, they tried the best that they can to address the most immediate and critical needs, you know, for various facilities.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
I'm Mark Van Bever. I'm the Court Administrator for the Judges of Brevard County. My role for the judges is similar to the county manager's role for you. I wanted to talk to you very briefly, before Jean Chipman comes to give our presentation, just to let you know that I'm proud of the partnership that we have with the courts, with the Board of County Commissioners. Together, I think we make Brevard County a better place to live. We're separate branches of government, and yet we come together, we work together as a great team. We appreciate the funding that you give to us, and if you ever have any questions about our interaction, or if you have needs of the courts, feel free to call me. Now, our Budget Director, Jean Chipman, is going to come give the presentation.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Commissioners, for giving us the opportunity to talk to you today about our budget. We're going to keep this very brief. Maybe we can beat Jill in the time. Basically, just to start off, just a brief explanation that the courts are involved with two different departments that are county-funded. So you have the Judicial Support Department, which Jill just went over, and then we have Judicial Branch Administration, which is what I'll be presenting today. This is a smaller department, three cost centers here. We will review the court's mission, we'll go over our programs and services that we offer, we'll look at how the programs are budgeted, funded, and spent, and then areas that might have an unfunded critical need. The court's mission, the mission of the judicial branch, is pretty basic, but very daunting, is to support the courts of Brevard County in the best manner possible, so that all citizens are insured fair, reliable, and prompt resolution of their cases. The Judicial Branch Administration, like I said, is composed of three cost centers, and you see them here on the slide, Court Improvement, Judicial Programs, and Drug Court Administration. The Court Improvement Program supports a number of different case types, mainly family, children, guardianship issues. This program handles hearings that involve marital and parental issues, mental incapacity, substance abuse, so that judges can devote more time to other, more complex or lengthier cases. Here, we also enable mediated agreements in juvenile dependency cases, in order to help expedite placement of abused and neglected children into a safe and stable home. These services provide participants with a more efficient and expedient process towards resolving their very important legal matters. Many of the citizens involved in these types of cases don't have means to hire attorneys or legal representation, so they're often self-representing. Therefore, the ability to expedite resolutions and mediate the settlements is extremely beneficial and important in reducing time, expense, and even trauma to those that are involved in these types of cases. Our judicial program cost center receives no general revenue funding. It's self-supported through a continuous balance forward of funds that were originally collected prior to the 2004 revision seven of Article V of the Florida Constitution. This cash balance was designated to remain available until depleted, in order to benefit court-related programs. It's used sparingly and prudently to support court needs, in order to avoid drawing from other revenue sources. The Drug Court Administration Program is also self-supported, requiring no general revenue. It receives its revenue from penalties assessed to those found guilty of violating Florida Statute 796.07, which prohibits prostitution. So per this statute, the first $500 of fees that are collected, or penalties that are collected, from those that were found guilty of prostitution, support the administrative operations of the county's drug treatment-based courts. The cost center is used in conjunction with grants and other revenue sources that are sought after and received, in order to keep the drug court program running. Here you'll see a roll-up of our programs that are in the department. Basically, a breakdown of the revenues and expenditures pertaining to each of the programs. On the revenue side, the balance forward helps to keep the programs largely self-supported. And overall, you'll see the department's expenditures are divided between compensation benefits and operating expenses. One critical area is the court's need for additional resources to expedite and improve the efficiency of the family case management, and this has been unfunded for a number of years. Again, these types of cases typically involve family, children, guardianship, and they generally affect those individuals without the means to hire legal assistance. Currently, many family trials are scheduled at least nine months from the date of filing, and funding a family case manager would help guide these complex issues to resolution, minimize delay for all the parties involved, and promote a greater access to justice in a more timely and responsive manner. And that's it. So again, I thank you for letting us present our budget and talk about the courts to you, and like Mark said, we greatly appreciate the support and the collaboration that the county provides for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no questions, the next up will be the Law Library.
This will be one of the quickest. I'm Annette Milnicov. I am the Director of the Amex Brewer Memorial Law Library in the Moore Justice Center. I think we can, probably you have seen enough outlines, I'll go straight to our mission statement. The Law Library's mission is to collect, preserve, and provide access to legal resources to the public, government offices, judges, and attorneys. Our vision is to provide confidential and cost-effective service to all members of the community. The Florida Constitution provides for access to the court, and the Law Library is a portal into the court system for those who do not qualify for legal aid, or cannot afford traditional legal services. We have two main services, the provision of legal materials and legal information. We provide authoritative print and electronic resources for use by Brevard County citizens and their government. We have cases as current as today, and we have territorial laws that go back before Florida was a state. There is online access to the statutes and case law of all 50 states, federal statutes, federal regulations, case law, as well as copyrighted secondary materials that help to interpret the law. We are a partner to county offices, and provide information and resource assistance to them. Trained staff delivers service to all customers seeking access to the justice system. Among the three of us, we have 50 years of experience in the Law Library. We can assist with online research, suggesting help with LexisNexis terms, finding rules of court in a particular subject, and e-filing. These are some typical requests for information, but there are many events that stress people's lives, as Jean mentioned, and for which help is sought through the courts. A parent may be unable to care for their child, and may need a grandparent to come in and take temporary custody. Sometimes, a single mother isn't receiving the child's support that she is owed, and she needs to know how to enforce her judgment. There may need to be a timely written response to a foreclosure that has gone wrong, or a guest has been invited into a home, eight months later, they're still there, and the court's assistants may be sought to remove them. We are funded by a mixture of statutory fees, service fees, and general fund revenue. The amount of general fund allocated to us is due to our minimum needs, after deducting other sources of revenue. I want to point out that not everything in the Law Library and our print collection is kept up to date. We recognize funding limitations, and we are focusing on refreshing the collection of individual and series titles, just on a rotating basis. All of our revenue streams flow into Brevard County, and we expend no funds directly. The blue portion of the pie represents our quarter of the $65 court costs collected pursuant to $939.185. Charges for services represents revenue from photocopy, notary fees, library fines, sales of surplus material, and the like, and of course, the 5% statutory reduction. And again, the general fund transfer or allocation is due to our minimum needs, after deducting these other sources of revenue.
Could you explain the statutory reduction of 5%?
I know it's Florida Statute 129.01. I don't have it in front of me.
That applies to all operating revenues. That statute states that operating revenues should be budgeted at 95% of their anticipated receipts. So we budget that 5% statutory reduction on countywide operating revenues.
Interesting.
As with most budgets, personnel is our largest expense. Second would be the capital expenditures, which in the world of libraries are the tools that we use to serve our customers, the print and online costs, and 5% for operating expenses, which would include contents and liability insurance, the cost of maintenance and upkeep of buyer square footage, copier rental, typical library supplies and office supplies, such as security tags, labels, toner, paper. 68% of our customers are laypersons navigating the court system. Often, they have consulted with an attorney, or have hired an attorney on a limited basis, and then they move forward to prepare their own case using our resources. We are assisting more customers with technologies, scanning, e-filing, moving a text message from a phone to a printer, and instructing in the use of the LexisNexis databases. Our critical need is, in a word, simply maintenance. We can't update as many materials as we would like, but we can main staff and the collection on our current budget. And that's it.
Another question.
Commissioner Bridget.
Where is the Law Library located?
We are on the first floor of the Moore Justice Center, across the street.
About, how many citizens do you think use your service monthly?
Monthly, I know that last, and I haven't broken it down by month, last fiscal year, we had over 68,000 customer contacts.
Wow. That's fascinating. Thank you.
That amazes me, that number, because with everything being available online, and everybody has computers, whether it's on their phone or in their desktops, you would think that they would have access to legal books, but then that brings up the question, do they?
Well, you know, legal information should come from authoritative sources, and the internet is kind of the wild, wild west of, you know, information.
Good point.
And so you can Google things and come up with a case on a particular subject, but that doesn't mean that case hasn't been reversed or overturned. That doesn't mean that our district court might seat a little differently than another district court in our same state.
So you said, there's three employees, you and two others?
There's three of us.
Right.
That includes me.
Handle the 60,000 people.
We're busy.
Okay. Well, I understand that. I spent more of my share in a law library, and so I know it can be, if you have no clue what you're doing, they have to depend on you.
Well, and it's like a different language. The law is sometimes read with a dictionary.
Yep, yep, that would be true. Any questions from the board? Thank you. We do have a card. Kevin Mon.
Thank you. I'm actually on the Board of Trustees with the Law Library, and I wasn't sure if I needed to sign in, so I was being extra cautious.
Oh, okay.
No, thank you. If there are no questions, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, if we have no questions on the Law Library, Transit Services.
Stand up here so I can see the slides. Plus, I got to show off my nice jacket, so that'll make my kids happy.
You look quite dapper today.
Yeah, thank you. Trying to keep up with Ian, if you've seen his paisley jacket, so. I'm going to just highlight on a couple of slides you have in front of you, because you've all seen the presentation. This is kind of reduced down, when you all became Commissioners, we gave everybody a briefing, and we take the same slides and just updated them out for you. Transit Services, we break our budget out into two different programs. It's bus operations and transit capital, pretty obvious operations as our day-to-day needs, and then transit capital is the federal capital funding we receive. There's our funding sources. You see about three-quarters of the funding source comes from state grants and federal grants. Charges for services are fares and other contracted revenue. You see our general fund transfers, about $1.859 million. The statutory reduction's in there for the revenue, and I got to highlight the miscellaneous, since I got asked that earlier today. Miscellaneous revenue, that is actually proceeds from vehicle sales, if we're allowed to get any of the proceeds back, that are nonfederal funds. So when you sell some vehicles, you do get some money back. There's our budget roll-up. On the next slide, if you look, bus operations is about $9 million. Two-thirds of it is our compensation and benefits. Our fuel budget can go up and down, obviously, depending on what's going on with fuel prices. We're somewhere in the neighborhood of about $1.2 million a year for fuel prices. The other thing I would like to point out is on the federal grants, you'll see the statutory reduction, but you'll see the $1.29 million. The federal government allows us to use some of our funds for operating expenses, so we have to write it into a capital grant, and then transfer it back into our operating budget. So that's why you see that negative number in there for capital. The leveraging slide, that's the slide we bring out all the time, that we get about $1.8 million in general fund, and with that, we draw down $2.5 million from Florida Department Transportation, almost $1.7 million from the Transportation Disadvantaged Commission. It's commissioned to the governor, operates very similar to DOT, but it provides the funding for our pair of transit, and then our $11 million in federal transit funds that we receive. So for the $1.8 million, it's a little over $7 drawn down for every dollar we put in with our local funds. This is a slide that some of our supporters put together. These are numbers from our National Transit Database. The numbers are from 2014, the latest numbers are 2015, that just came out. The numbers are from 2014, the latest numbers are 2015, that just came out a couple of weeks ago. I haven't had a chance to update. But what we want to show you there is, on the blue, that is the local funding of other transit systems in the state. We kind of looked at our peer group, so that's not Miami, it isn't Pinellas County, it's folks that operate similar to us. So, you can see, on the left, Sarasota County gets the most local funding. It doesn't mean all general fund, it could come from cities or some other tax ability, all the way down to Indian River County. And then the red in front of it, that is the number of passenger trips that are being provided. So, you see us, we're about four from the right there, and you see that little peak, so we do pretty good in terms of providing trips to the amount of local monies we receive. And so, we'd like to show that off a little bit. I will tell you, for the fiscal year '15 numbers that are coming, that just came out, we'll slide a couple more to the left on our local funding, because we received a little bit more, but it just gives you a rough idea of the funding that the different counties provide for their transit system versus the ridership they're generating. This is, we put this slide in last year, the board gave us an additional $154,000 in general fund. We said we'd add the following services, which we did. So, you see the three routes, five, seven, and eight, so each of our fixed routes now operates Monday through Saturday. Those three else did not have Saturday service until December. We reduced headways. Headway is how often a bus comes by your stop. So, routes one and 29 had a bus coming by every two hours on Saturday. Now, there's a bus every hour that helps make the transfers. One and 29 operates from Titusville all the way down to Melbourne, so it's our cross-county route. And then we added an extra weeknight transfer right here outside at 7:00, the latest at 6:00, which means in theory you had to be in the bus by 5:00 to get home, you know, anytime after 6:00. So, this allows people to actually work past 5:00 and then get your transfer. This is just a highlight of, you know, 30 buses and 19 routes. We have 29 paratransit buses out there. The six vans daily, that's our volunteers in motion. The other paratransit service, we operate some stuff for the state, and through AG Matters, we call those our contracted routes. ADA stands for Americans with Disability Act. Under the act, we have to provide complimentary paratransit, and then we have our volunteers in motion, and then our van pool program. And I should add, the state has changed how we do billing for transportation disadvantaged, so we've just had, we've just sent out 6,000 letters and had people recertify themselves, and we actually have a person that's 105 years old riding paratransit a couple of times a year. So, and that person's going to the doctor, basically, to certify that they can live at home. So, we're helping them live independently. We also have a couple other 100-year-olds, but that was, 105 is our record so far. There's our bus operations. There again, that's our budget, shows the general fund transfer is not quite 20% of the budget, somewhere in that neck of the woods, and then how we divide up our different revenues. Our transit capital funds a number of different things, vehicle purchases, the preventive maintenance for our buses, facilities, bus stops. And I want to highlight the last couple of points there. It isn't something we would think of as capital, it's not like a hard item, like a desk or a computer, because we've got software and planning functions, but the federal government allows to be called that capital, so we can get reimbursed 100%. So, at times, if you ask me a question, my training is, what is federal capital? It's not necessarily what county defines as capital, but we're able to draw some of our capital funds to pay for operating expenses. And way back on the slide, you feel like it'll roll up, we are able to allocate some of our salary expenses to manage the capital grants, too. And then, once again, there's our transit capital, and it shows the transfer that's operating eligible money, and then the statutory reduction. And then our very last one is, we didn't call it critical needs, we kind of called it more trends and issues, because some of the critical needs were meeting, but a couple of things I want to highlight and leave with you folks. Service coverage and frequency of our 20 routes, we still only have seven routes that have less than 60-minute headway. Once again, that's a bus that comes by once every hour. You know, 60 minutes is the base that you want to go, and you want to improve the service from there. And then, we operate in loops, and loops aren't good. You want a bus route that goes from point A to point B without making the loop. And where that hurts you as a loop, as a rider, if you have a bus that operates 60-minute loop, in the morning you ride it for 20 minutes, on the way home you've got to ride it for 40 minutes. So, you want more direct service. But the problem we do loops is, we have a large service area with fewer buses, so loops cover more service area. The other thing is, you could be on Mitten Road, we only go northbound. So, if you live on the west side of Mitten Road, you've got to cross the street to get to the bus, even if you want to go southbound, then you ride it back around, and then you come back that way. So, loops aren't the best way of doing it. And then our Sunday routes, we only have three routes on Sunday, so those are kind of our service frequency needs. Our service areas, we don't serve west of Mitten Road very well, we're getting lots of push for West Palm Bay and West Melbourne. You'll see an agenda item at tonight's meeting talking about an opportunity for a route there. We don't serve Port St. John very well, past US-1, so there's some other needs there. There's still needs for paratransit throughout the hours. The continuing bus stop improvements, we're still working on those. We have about 65 shelters now out of about 850 bus stops. We have 16 more online, they're being programmed and designed for Titusville, trying to get six more in Merritt Island, so we're working on that. You also see an agenda coming, the Vietnam Veterans Building, which is next to our property, we're looking at acquiring that and then using that for parking lot, and then fix our bus stop up at Cocoa. If you come to our Cocoa facility, we block Var Avenue three times an hour, we're making our transfers. We have customers walking through parked cars and stuff like that, so we're trying to improve that stop there. So, tonight, hopefully, is the first step on that. Intelligent transportation procurement system, that is our version of automatic vehicle locator, GPS, that you'll be able to get on your phone and see where your bus is, how often your bus is coming, do internet reservations, and actually, the systems we're looking at are so long that if you're sitting here and need to catch a bus at 5:10, it will tell you what time to get out of your chair to walk down to catch the bus on time. But that's going to be programmed in our next year's budget, we're going to use federal funds for that. Some of our cost estimates are like $1.2 million, so we want to highlight, this is going to be a two, three-year process, but it will help stop analysis, do a number of stuff, bring us into the 21st century. And then last, when I went to rehearsal last night, this really should be state and federal grant management regulations that are increasing. The commissioner mentioned about maintaining assets. The federal government now has a transit asset management requirement that just started this year, so we have to monitor our assets, put them on a grade, report back to the feds, put it part of our yearly. I mean, we keep track of roofs and equipment and everything, but now we have to follow a plan. The feds now have safety regulations, they've taken four years, they haven't quite come back to say what they're going to do to regulate us on the safety. We already get regulated through Florida DOT, but now we have the federal government. They are getting tighter and tighter, other items. We follow the county's procurement guidelines, and then when there's occasional federal rules that follow the county government, we had a little three-page procedure, they didn't like that, so we just wrote like a 70-page procedure on how to follow federal procurement guidelines. Been doing this for 25 years, this is the most I've seen the feds getting into our day-to-day business. The two things from the state I just want to highlight, the state is now going what they call training review, which is, they come down every three years, review everything. Feds already do that, that's 180 pages from the feds. And then last but not least, our safety and training person got hired by our contractor, and so he's doing the statewide inspections. So, now DOT's coming in, and they'll be doing several day-long inspections on our safety regulations, our safety buses. So, these are all new items that have just come up in the last couple of years, so we're able to manage it with our staff, but it just takes time away from doing the day-to-day operations, so I just want to highlight that. So, that's our entire presentation, so happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
And I will sit here.
Okay, we have some cards. Arlene Naughtie.
Good afternoon. I'm Arlene Naughtie, West Melbourne, Florida. I'm a member of the Melbourne Space Coast Chapter of the National Federation of the While I am sighted, I have lived in the world of blind, low-vision, disabled, and special needs citizens for 75% of my life. My wish today is to simply say, I know you are in an extraordinarily difficult position to balance your budgets with the funding that is allocated to the Brevard County Board of Commissioners. I want to say that the Space Coast Area Transit, which is a county-funded program, has been doing a very amazing job with the funding that they have available. We all know that the county is growing, just drive up and down and look at the construction. That is going to bring more people into the need for Transportation Disadvantaged and Americans with Disability Act services. So, when you look at your budgets, this is a polite but very much-needed comment, to please be as fair and as generous as you can be to keep these services flowing. Thank you.
Joseph Naughtie.
A minute. It's a little different, Joe.
Okay. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Joseph P. Naughtie. I'm the president of the newly-formed Melbourne Space Coast Chapter. We're growing, we have over 40 paid blind members, myself, I'm blind, but I'm also half-deaf. I'm also been the national president of the Deaf Blind Division for the National Federation of the Blind for all 52 states in the United States, so I've been around the block. The transportation issue that we have here, they're doing a great job trying to keep everything going, but the problem is money. I see what my other county of people are doing, they have quite a budget. Our budget's too low. We've got to do something and fix it. I'm struggling here this afternoon, I have new hearing aids on, they don't have a T-switch, so my FM unit don't work. So, trying to hear all the conversations, I've got to find out now where to get good hearing aids that have T-switches, so I can hear better. Struggles here, there, and everywhere. It's up to you guys to find the right money to make the right transportation go, so under ADA, we can go door-to-door transportation. Thank you very much.
Camille Tate.
The microphone is pretty far away. If you give me your other hand. Yeah, I know. Yeah, I'm loud.
My name is Camille Tate, I live in Melbourne, Florida. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Melbourne Space Coast Chapter of the National Federation of the Blind of Florida, and I'm here to talk about transit. Now, transportation, since we started our chapter, has been the biggest concern and issue for every single one of our members, whether they are blind, low-vision, or are fully sighted. And one of the things that we want to make sure is that you, the commissioners, understand how vitally important transportation is to each and every one of us in our chapter, and the other disabled people across the county who actually use the transit services. For example, I'm returning to college in the fall. I had to decide which college I wanted to go to, and I decided not to go to the University of Central Florida in Cocoa, because I would have to take a paratransit bus to the college, get on another bus, go to the Cocoa terminal, and then take a bus from there to the campus. So, you're looking at at least, you know, hour and a half to two hours or more, just one way to get to school, and then back home again in the reverse. We have a member who is currently at the Daytona School for the Blind, who before she went for training, and when she comes back, job readiness and getting a job is her number one priority. And the first thing she's been asked whenever she goes to an employer is, how are you getting to work? So, we have to do what we can to get transportation to be at the level where we, as disabled people, don't have to worry, how are we going to get to school, how are we going to get to work? If you want to go out with our friends, do we have to find transportation someplace else, do we have to take a cab? We should be able to live in the social and economic fabric of this county, and transportation is extremely important to us in order to remain, you know, citizens of this county and live as fully as we want. The National Federation of the Blind believes that blindness isn't the characteristic that defines us or our future, and transit kind of goes hand-in-hand with that, because without access to transit, then we are stuck in our homes, we can't live the life that we want to live, and we're shut out from the things that we can do in the beautiful county where we live. Because Brevard is a beautiful county, but it's hard for us to experience it if we can't get on a bus from our home and go to the beach, or go to a museum, or go to a movie, because I do go to the movies. We can't go to work, we can't go to school, so just keep transportation in mind when you're doing the budget for the next budget year. Thank you.
Thank you, Camille. Maria Rigolosi.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm new to Brevard County, I moved here in 2014. I enjoy the bus system, it's my declaration of independence, so to speak. I travel the buses as often as I can, I try to use paratransit as little as possible. Of late, unfortunately, due to seizure, I've had to rely on it more and more. So, when I have to call, and I have to tell them, I have to be at that doctor by 10:00, sometimes that means I have to get on that bus at a quarter to 8:00, or 8:00, just to get to the doctor's office, and sit there, of course, and wait for the doctor. The bus system is paramount to live here, for me especially. I refuse to be defined by my disability, I want to be able to use the bus system when I want to. I like the idea that it's out there for me to use, and I travel it extensively. I travel to Cocoa on my own. People tell me, you're crazy. Why? How can you do that? Excuse me, I still have two feet that work, I have a mouth that works, and if push comes to shove and somebody thinks, you know, hey, lady, you can't do anything, this works well between the legs. To cut anything on the bus system, I'd rather give you my right hand, really. I love Space Coast Transit, as I said, I use it extensively. Whenever possible, I will ride it on the fixed routes as opposed to taking paratransit, because I like the ability to get on a bus, I know where I'm going, I'll research it on my phone, I'll ask questions, and I get where I've got to get. As far as jobs, yes, I've been looking for a job for two years now, and that question is on a lot of applications, how will you get to work? I have to put down my only method, the bus system. Well, you know, buses run maybe once an hour, and I says, well, maybe I'll have to take the bus an hour earlier just to make sure that I'm here on time, which would not be a problem as far as I'm concerned, because I'd want to get to my job. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Comments from the board?
I have a comment. I think that our transportation director deserves a big pat on the back, as do all of our directors, but the numbers are just phenomenal, that he and his folks can leverage $1.8 million into $15.6 million, it's just incredible, and that they can provide, according to the chart that he gave us, the services that he provides for the amount of money that he uses in comparison to other cities and counties is just pretty incredible, so... And I have to remind everybody up here and everybody in the room, that, but for the grace of God, go us. So, I think that we really need to consider, I know I caught a lot of flak last year in supporting an increase, I was accused of busting the budget for increasing transit, but I'm glad I did.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to planning and developments.
Good afternoon, board. We're going to run through Planning and Developments budget real quick. This, the numbers that you see today reflect our mid-year supplements and amendments, so some of you have requested information, and the information you see today may be slightly different than that that was requested. So, we're going to talk about our programs, all of which are mandated by local or state statute. We have, we're going to look at the building code, budget, enforcement budget, impact fee and central cashier budget, licensing and regulations, and planning and zoning. This slide reflects our total budget, the area in blue represents impact fees, the area in red is our non-general fund revenues, and then you have our general fund revenues, which make up less than 3%. And the impact fees, we're really just a pass-through organization, we collect those and pass them on to the other facilities which need to be constructed. And here you can see a breakdown of what those fees are. Pursuant to Florida statute, other than administrative costs, these revenues... Pursuant to Florida statute, other than administrative costs, these revenues are restricted to the construction of new infrastructure or facilities, or expansion of existing infrastructure or facilities. When you look at our non-general fund revenues, these are primarily user fees. This is the breakdown of how those lay out for us. Building Code compliance has the largest non-general fund revenues, and there is a statutory restriction for those, which can only, they can only be used towards building permit-related activities. And then this is a breakdown of our general fund support that we obtain. So here's a roll-up of the budget for the impact fees, and here you see the roll-up for correctional, educational, and emergency services for both the revenues and expenditures. This slide, we have the impact fee revenue and expenditures for fire, rescue, libraries, and transportation fees. And then this slide, we reflect the revenues for our non-general fund programs, which is Building Code compliance and licensing and regulations. And here we have the expenditures for those programs. And then this slide, we show you the general fund-supported organizations, which are code enforcement, impact fee administration, and cashier, planning and zoning, revenues. And then here, we're looking at their expenditures for those programs. And now we get into some trends and issues. And in this slide, you can see that our general fund transfer has gone down by 49% since 2008 and '10 fiscal year, which is when our department was formed. One of the things that our department does is we actually generate general fund, but through our zoning and comp plan amendment applications. And in that timeframe, that amount has increased by 42%. Our non-general fund revenue has increased by 93% in that timeframe, and this is due to development activity and the type of applications that we're receiving. This slide shows you the number of applications, cases, and licenses that we process, and since 2008, it has increased by 29.2%. And then this slide, we show you the full-time equivalents and how we've lost full-time equivalents. We are down 49.6% of the full-time equivalents since 2007. And here, we're looking at the number of applications, licenses, and cases processed per full-time equivalent, and you can see that that number has more than doubled since Our trends and issues, I guess our critical needs are, you know, we have increasing development. We're really at the tipping point of keeping up with those. We're running at maximum capacity, and we've obtained just about all we can out of our software, the Excela program. In Building Code compliance, we've had some ongoing recruitment challenges, obtaining certified license, plans examiners, and building inspectors. We've had, we're down to four plans examiners now, and we've had vacancies since 2014 that we have been unable to fill. The Excela program has played a significant role in allowing us to gain the efficiencies necessary to double our output with our staff. We're at the point now where we need to gain some new functionality through that system and to gain greater efficiencies. The Evaluation and Appraisal Report is a statutory requirement for the comp plan. Every seven years, we have to go in and update our comp plan. That comp plan update is due this November, and that will require that we go in and update fifteen elements of the comp plan, and we'll involve multiple county departments. That's pretty much our presentation. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
I have a quick question. I think we talked maybe about this a little bit before, but can you, you know, enlighten us on why you're having a hard time filling the plans examiner positions?
The, one is, we look today, and there's a position, there's Indian River County, I believe, is looking for building plans examiners. The pay comparison is almost $10,000 more compared to what we're offering for the same position. So we have that. It's been a challenge, is our level of salary that we're able to offer. The second one is that the statute licensing requirements have been very tough to overcome. There is some legislation going forward. It would allow an apprenticeship program, which would be very helpful, but that still would require that someone has to go enter the program, show that they've gone through the requirement, and then obtain the licenses, which would be probably a year or two before we were able to realize any true, before we would realize a benefit to that.
So is it two or three spots, or four? I wasn't paying attention. How many?
How many positions do, are we current, we're currently down two positions, one plans examiner and one inspector.
Okay.
But back in the heyday, we're running at about half of our staff from the heyday, back in the boom period.
Speaking of those numbers, you're talking about around '06?
Yes, sir.
So how many applications do you have today compared to then?
We are, we project that we'll have about 29,000 applications this year. Then we are running about 20, maybe.
So you're doing it with half the staff?
Yeah, and we're doing it faster. We're turning building permits around, 95% of our building permits are being turned around in seven days.
And do you attribute that to the improved function of software?
It's improved function of software. It's efficiencies that we've looked at making internally, and that we're, you know, before it was a paper package that would move to everybody. Now it's scanned and uploaded into the system, and it gets distributed at once to all of the necessary agencies to review it, which allows it to move much faster.
Super. Well, once again, we're doing more with, more with less.
Yes, sir.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any questions from the Board? Natural Resources.
All right. I wish I could toss this out and give you something that might keep you more awake at this late hour. I know you've got more hours to go, but this is down to just dollars and cents, lots of pie charts. So you're well aware of all the programs in the Natural Resources Office, but it's a fairly eclectic collection of programs unlike many other counties. So we have our Environmental Resources Management, which is mostly our permitting group. We have Remediation and Compliance, which actually provides hazardous waste cleanup in five counties in the state of Florida. We have our Beaches, Boating, and Waterways programs, the Stormwater Utility, mosquito control, and the new Save Our Indian River Lagoon program. So the overview, you can see the two largest pieces of the pie are related to the lagoon, either muck dredging as a part of Beaches, Boating, and Waterways, or muck dredging as two-thirds of the Save Our Lagoon funding. And then the next biggest piece is the Stormwater Utility, followed by mosquito control and our other programs. So starting with Environmental Resource Management, the majority of their revenues come from either charges for services or permit fees. There's $267,000 coming in from the general fund. The majority of their expenses are compensation and benefits. The operating expenses are mostly due to the cost allocation plan, and then there's a very small amount of capital outlay. Moving on to Environmental Remediation and Compliance, their major revenues are charges for services. This is a state-funded local program. So we have two contracts from the state that cover the majority of those services. We have a small quantity generator inspection program that operates based on permits and fees, which is the wedge on the bottom right of the chart, and some balance forward. The expenses, again, are mostly compensation and benefits with a modest operating budget. There are also some reserves that are in those state contracted dollars that we're allowed to roll forward and hang on to for unexpected events. And there's a reversion clause in the state contract of, you know, what we're allowed to keep for emergencies versus what we have to send back. The Stormwater Utility, where the assessments are coming in around just over $6 million now. We have a significant balance forward. This had gotten down to a very unhealthy amount, and so we were glad that over the last two years, we've been able to get that. The balance forward actually serves as reserves and helps us plan those next-year projects. And so this is, this is actually a good thing here. And then the $3 million in intergovernmental, those are mostly grants from other agencies. On the expense side, over half of the dollars go directly into capital projects. Operating expenses include things like street sweeping and baffle box cleaning, all sorts of things that keep pollution out of the lagoon. And then you see those reserves that roll up into the next year's balance forward. Mosquito control revenues, the majority of this is from the mosquito control millage. There's also a balance forward in this program as well. The balance forward is very important that we have dollars available for outbreaks. We know from our history that we have outbreaks in various mosquito-borne diseases, and when that happens, we have to have the resources to control that health risk. So on the expense side, you see a fairly balanced distribution of expenses between compensation and benefits, operating and reserves. I was told this looked like Pac-Man. Right, so 34, over $34 million is in grant funds. The majority of this is revenues from the Florida Legislature for muck dredging projects that we received prior to the Save Our Lagoon effort. And so then you see the rest of the pieces. This has $105,000 general fund transfer that covers the one person who manages the Boating and Waterways program. So on the expense side, again, you see the majority of those revenues going directly to projects, mostly muck dredging, a very small fraction going to compensation, benefits, operating, and reserves. So with our brand-new Save Our Lagoon trust fund, these are the revenues anticipated in this fiscal year, which is not a full year of collections. And then on the expense side, we went through an effort with the Citizens Oversight Committee and with all the cities, and then brought that to you as the Commission to look for projects that could get underway this year, since tax collections started earlier than anticipated. And so the yellow wedge there are the grants and aids to the mostly cities to get projects underway this fiscal year, and then the majority of dollars collected this year will roll forward into next year when we've had time to get permits and engineering done, and we're ready to hit the ground running with lots more projects. So trends and issues, like many other departments, we are experiencing a retirement of experienced personnel, and, you know, they take years and years and years of expertise and walk out the door, and it's extremely difficult to replace that with new folks. Like Todd just presented, the increase in permits to review have doubled, while our staff definitely has not. We're, up until the most recent additions to try to accelerate permit review time, we had the same number of staff through that whole period that the number of permits we were reviewing doubled. Like I mentioned, the cleanup of petroleum is, that program is now happening in five counties. The reason the state contracted with us for those additional counties is because we were a highly cost-effective alternative for them. They either work with local programs, or they hire consultants out of Tallahassee. So we have a couple advantages over consultants out of Tallahassee. One, we don't have the travel costs that they do, but I think more important to our community is that these staff, they live here, they drink this water, their kids play in this dirt. They have every incentive to make sure that the job is done right and the job is done well, and our environment is clean and safe and healthy for our community. We have Zika to continue to try our best to control. Last year, we were successful in preventing any of the locally, any of the Zika that came here and people who had traveled abroad. We prevented that from spreading here locally. We will do our best again this year. Hurricane Matthew did destroy about four miles of mosquito-controlled burms. We maintain, Brevard County maintains more mosquito impoundments than any other county. And so those 28,000 acres of salt marsh would be breeding millions and millions of mosquitoes if we didn't flood that reproductive territory. And so in order to flood that, we have to have protective dikes to be able to stage the water up. And so those damaged burms are preventing us from being able to do that this year, especially down in the south beaches, and we will have to use other, more expensive means than water until we can get those burms repaired. So we're working with FEMA to try to make that happen as quickly as FEMA moves. Storm protection due to healthy beaches, the happy story about Hurricane Matthew was typically when we have a hurricane come through, we see lots of damage, especially to our county park facilities, all those stairs and ADA ramps down to the beach. We've, over the course of the last decade and a half, have been able to restore our beaches to healthy wit that has protected all of those parks and infrastructure, so we were not making headlines like our counties to the north from damages from Matthew. We are looking to expand that with mid-reach dune, beach and dune nourishment in the coming year. Reef, we have to do some reef mitigation prior to that beach nourishment, and that reef mitigation is, they're building the reef sections right now. They should start installing them in just a few weeks offshore of Indian Harbor and Satellite Beach. And then I have one last slide, which is our response to Indian River Lagoon needs. So back just eight months ago, in August, the Board approved the Save Our Lagoon project plan. We've been working very rapidly on developing intergovernmental partnerships with all the cities to help us implement this plan. We've worked with the community to recruit a fantastic Citizens Oversight Committee, and they have been working diligently, meeting monthly, dealing with the issues that have arisen for this plan. All the dollars are going into a trust fund, which we established per year resolution. We are, the phone keeps ringing with folks with innovative ideas, and that's fantastic. We have to be really careful that we're not using people's hard-earned tax dollars to beta-test somebody else's innovative strategy for their private gain. So we're looking at, you know, where is the right place there to drive that innovation, but they have to prove their technology before we invest in it. We continue to look at leveraging opportunities. Certainly, the legislative process this year was unlike the prior three sessions, so we'll be looking for other sources of leveraging opportunities. We continue to rely on community support and engagement in many aspects and facets of implementing the plan. For transparency, we're working with the committee and other interested parties in a communication strategy. We brought in auditors right from the beginning to work with us on how to set up all the accounts, how to set up the processes, so that we're on the right track there. We are going to be working on how to measure progress in terms of both outputs of the plan, what are we accomplishing, what are the specific projects and deliverables of the plan versus outcomes, which is ultimately the water quality improvement and seagrass restoration. restoration and all the fisheries that should follow that. With the increase in the number of staff for implementing the lagoon plan, we need office space, and that has yet to be resolved. So those are our issues.
Any comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple questions.
Commissioner Tobias?
I know the board, I think at 3 to 2 vote authorized the staff you were speaking of. Were you successful in hiring that staff?
Five of the six positions have been advertised so far. They just closed a couple weeks ago. We have 91 applications to review, and so that's what we're doing. We're going through applications to figure out who to interview.
When do you expect to bring those folks online?
As soon as possible. Obviously, this had to happen first. Budget prep has been consuming our lives the last couple weeks. But it typically takes, you know, a few weeks to get through the interviews and the selection process, and then they have to give notice. So it'll probably still be another month and a half, two months before we have people on board.
Looking at the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Trust Fund expense, the $24,225,000. Grants and aid are merely a pass-through. Is that correct?
Those are dollars that are collected. So in order to set up the trust fund, in the way the resolution read, those infrastructure sales tax dollars collected by the state would normally be distributed by formula to the county and to each of the municipalities. To make this work, we needed to all work together. We needed to put all those dollars in one pot and pick the best projects and work together. And so those grants and aids are taking those dollars that were all collected into one pot and put in the trust fund, and then sending them to the cities for specific projects that are in the plan that were approved by the Citizen Oversight Committee and approved by the board.
Okay. So my question is, since you outlined that it is merely a pass-through, does it make sense to have compensation benefits this year of $224,000, yet operating expenses of just $170,000? Am I understanding we'll spend more money on manpower than directly cleaning the lagoon once the pass-throughs, as you just explained, are have taken place? Plus, I guess add the issue of office space. Am I reading the chart incorrectly?
Right. So a lot of the work that has to occur is getting the permits in place, getting the projects designed and ready to go next year. We also have to work on the contracts with all the cities. We have to collect all the data. We have to process all the invoices. We have to track all of that. We have to communicate it to the public. And so, you know, I believe that the lack of staffing is what's slowing us down right now. We could be moving faster if we had people on board to make all these things happen.
Again, I have to commend you on what you do, how you do it, how efficient you are, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Emergency management. Yeah. Well, we can take a five-minute. I was going to cut us loose a quarter of, but if you've got to go now, let's take a break. We'll take a break after Kimberly's.
It's not just me. I mean, I'm sure there's other people that have a set of computers. It's fine. I mean, I'm fine.
What time do you need?
I'm game with whatever the board wants. It's fine.
Kimberly?
Okay.
You have a floor.
All right. Thank you. I'll try to be brief. So you're probably familiar with our mission. The idea is to reduce the loss of life and human suffering, minimize property damage, and protect environmentally sensitive areas from all types of disasters. We have three divisions in our department, which is Emergency Management Operations, the 800 megahertz radio system, and then E911 Administration and Address Assignment. Our financial and operating restrictions include Florida statutes, inter-local agreements, contracts, and grants. So this is looking at emergency operations. In that section of our department, we have an $877,000 operating budget, of which $520,000 is general fund. If you'll look at the two green sections there of general fund, part of that is a match for grants, because the grants that we receive, EMPA and EMPG, are required to be matched by general fund. And then there is the other portion of general fund that is the non-match. All of the funds here are restricted, except for those non-matching general fund dollars. Emergency operations includes evacuation planning, shelter coordination, mass care support. We conduct a variety of emergency management training and exercises, including planning and exercises for the St. Lucie Nuclear Power Plant and space launches. We also alert and warn the public through mass notification system, through social media, and through text alerts. We're also responsible for the special needs registry and planning for those individuals who have special needs through shelter, staff, supply, and transportation support. We used to update that list on an annual basis. We'd send out a notice one time a year and update everyone. We've recently changed that so that we send people out a postcard when it's their birthday to remind them to go ahead and update their special needs registration. We also update the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, which details how all phases of an emergency are handled. That's reviewed by us annually, but it's also reviewed by the state every four years and adopted by the board every four years. We conduct exercises and drills for not just our staff, but for municipal, county, and state agencies, as well as nongovernmental organizations, hospitals, and the private On the E911 Administration and Address Assignment section, that has an operating budget of $7.4 million. The general fund portion of that is $20,000, and that is for address assignments that are done that are not related to 911. And all of those funds are restricted, except for the general fund dollars. The E911 Administration and Address Assignment is responsible for the countywide operation of the 911 system. We're not the people who answer the 911 calls. We are the ones who make sure that that system works and the calls are routed appropriately, that GIS and electronic mapping are provided to the public safety answering points for accurate dispatching and quicker response, that the database is accurate, and that new addresses are signed for development or redevelopment, and ensuring that those streets and addresses are not duplicated. The final division of our department is the 800 megahertz radio system. That's a $4.2 million budget, and the general fund portion of that is $74,719. All of those funds are restricted, except for general fund dollars. The 800 megahertz radio system is responsible for the administration, maintenance, and improvement of the public safety radio system, which is not just used by the county, but it's used by all the municipalities, state and federal agencies, a variety of different partners that we have in our county. We have about 56 different agencies that use the system. We also maintain and coordinate our FCC licenses, file license applications, renewals, and modifications as necessary, monitor and administer county-owned towers and properties, and review the need for in-building distributed antenna systems in accordance with NFPA, which is National Fire Protection Association, and FCC rules. And so then overall, the EM department revenue, 56.75% of that is balance forward. The majority of that is either money that's for the 800 megahertz program, which is the expansion of the system, or for the E911 system. We also have, of course, the statutory reduction mentioned earlier. Grants and state revenue accounts for 27%. We do have some accounted for with interest in rent for the leases on cell towers and radio towers. 8.5% is charges for service, and then the 4.89%, which is general fund transfer. Five-year trend of general fund support has been flat. And this is, shows how those numbers are broken down yet again. The efficiencies that we've implemented to reduce general fund reliance include successful applications for grants for technology purposes, for exercise and drill coordination, and for plan development. We've also negotiated with FPNL and cell carriers to increase those sources of revenue. And we also partner with seven municipalities to manage address assignment on a fee basis. We're also collaborating with face-based nonprofit and educational institution to utilize volunteers, and this is an example. Over the past year, we're looking at about 4,200 hours donated by volunteers, which is a $99,000 value. Our achievements this year was that our local mitigation strategy plan was recognized as a top-tier plan by the state of Florida, that our Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan was updated and adopted by the board. We've completed transition to a north and south simulcast radio system, expanding the radio operations and coverage from four to eight radio towers. We've been recognized by national communications vendors for the simplicity and thoroughness of our distributed antenna system approval process. And we've implemented a new mass notification system platform, which is used by both ourselves, our internal partners, and the public. We also completed I3 platform upgrades for all the public safety answering points in the county, which will make text to 911 possible in the future, consolidated the address assignment for seven of the 16 municipalities, and completed a full data scrub on that information in the 911 database, achieving a 99% match rate. We've upgraded mapping equipment and hardware for all those public safety answering points. And what we've done is replace power sources and hard drives rather than replace the entire set of equipment. And we've also implemented hosted 911 services via lease agreement, saving $343,000 annually. We've also initiated and implemented a new language translation service so that all public safety answering points can use that for translation for 911 calls. We received national accreditation through the Emergency Management Accreditation Program, recognized for excellence in a variety of areas. We also received two statewide awards for our hurricane season campaign and public information. Trends and issues, this was addressed earlier by someone else, talking about the number of traffic tickets that had declined. And so that, we received $12.50 per ticket on that surcharge for the radio system, and that number has declined as well.
So what we need is more tickets or more money per ticket?
Well, that's the amount of money that we get per statute, per traffic ticket.
Okay.
So in the day-to-day, the EOC provides staff offices for emergency operations and 800 megahertz radio staff, but E911 staff is here at the government center. The EOC also serves as the county warning point, which each county must have one of those, and hires houses dispatch, which is a secondary public safety answering point for fire rescue. And our repair costs over the last 10 years have totaled $833,000. So this is just an example of the numbers of meetings and trainings and exercises that we've held, including activations, launches, severe weather, and other sources. So I did want to bring to your attention the next stage of commercial space activity. One of the reasons that our EOC is so active because the number of space launches. So currently, there are four complexes that are in use, and in five years, this is what it will look like. So there's going to be a drastic increase in the number of launches and space activity in the next five years, which we can expect to be extremely busy. So our final slide is critical need, which is for a new emergency operations center. And while we have the need for the new 40,000-square-foot building, we do have partnerships so far with regard to that. Brevard County School Board has provided a land lease, as you know, which the board approved for a dollar a year. State of Florida, the legislature has approved $1.5 million for funding for design. That's waiting for the governor's approval. And then a federal emergency management preparedness grant, $833,000 for the hardening of that facility. And the city of Rockledge has offered to provide site preparations in a partnership with us, as in kind, not through actual dollars.
I'd just like to say, I went to a meeting today, well, meeting, it was at lunch in the National Space Club, and they're projecting that within the next few years, there'll be 100 launches a year.
We've heard that.
And that might be conservative. When I was in Washington last week, I spent time in the Pentagon and with private enterprise. And SpaceX is looking at 40 to 50 launches per year in the next two to three years by themselves. And Blue Origin, when they get online, they're going to be about doing the same. And that doesn't take into account OneWeb and all the other providers. And ULA, they haven't gone away. So we could be pushing 150 launches in the next, so that would be like three a week.
We also know that the hazards will change with regard to all the different launch vehicles, also with the return to manned spaceflight. Those are all different components that we'll need to account for.
Yep. All righty. Thank you, Kim.
Okay.
Let's do central services, and you guys don't have to worry about having enough time to wrap up, because do we not want to do central services?
I mean, you guys are welcome, but I have to go get my computer out of my car for my 6 o'clock board meeting.
We have to be at the board meeting, too.
I realize that.
And it doesn't get chaired unless the chairman cranks it down.
But if you want everybody to wait, I think that...
Well, if we start at 6:10, it's... What do you guys think? Do we want to get the central services done? How long are we looking at?
We can, you know, they may be a little more lengthy than some of the others.
What's that?
They may be a little bit more lengthy than some of the others because of the infrastructure issues that she's going to try to address, which the board raised.
Let's pass on that, then.
Okay.
Sorry to keep you guys waiting all this time. So we have no public comments, we have no other business, and we can reserve the board reports until the next meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Again, I'd like to, not that it comes to any fruition, but I'd like to pass up my reduction list on the ones, so you have time to look over that. So maybe we can discuss and then disapprove those at the beginning of our next meeting.
Well, just for the record, I think they're important that you're doing this. I know you get frustrated because we're not going at this in a...
Fiscally conservative manner?
More, in a more diligent manner. But I think what we're doing is we're sending the message that these are things that we have to look at, and if we get to the point where, and I suspect we're going to do that, we have to go looking for outside funding, then people have to know that if we don't get outside funding, next year, the cuts are going to be this drastic and more.
Well, thank you for your indulgence, at least.
No, I think it's vastly important. And you're carrying the load on this, because I did it last year, and I wasn't nearly as thorough as you. So it's your turn. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability or any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.